Lavent General Fund Budget Workshop. This meeting is officially called to order at 8:30 a.m. on this morning. We will open the meeting as usual with public comment. Issues or concerns not on the agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the DIAS, begin by stating their name and address, or single member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Do we have people in the audience today who would like to come forward? If it's part of the agenda item, you cannot make a comment during public comment.
I just need to know that other people will be able to make a comment during the agenda item.
As always.
All right. They were not able to last time we broke for lunch, so just wanted to ensure that.
You got it.
Thank you.
Other public comment? Shane, I know I saw you earlier. Lucky you.
Chicken biscuit.
Chicken biscuit.
We'll give you time to finish that last bite. Sorry if we had to throw some of it away.
I didn't have to admit that, Shane.
All right, so there's still so much confusion on all of the signs downtown. The detour signs do not tell you where to go or what to do. They just say there's a detour, and there's nothing to indicate what you might do. And there's so many people so confused, and I know you moved on Concho and Oaks yesterday, the whatever you call them.
Yes, ma'am.
But we.
The contractor came in this weekend, has started the button-up items on the project, trying to get it cleaned up. So they did. They had their contractor come in yesterday, put in the barricades. Of course, they do it exactly like it's on a piece of paper. So we did go out yesterday, straightened around a little bit. My crews are back out there this morning, going to be cleaning that up.
With signs, I hope, because there's just, on Chabern and Twoig, there's just one sign that says "detour." You don't know where you're detouring to, or what the direction should be.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We're going to get all of that cleaned up today. So my crews are going to be down there working on that all day. So, or not all day, but this morning. So we'll get that cleaned up.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Shane while he's up here concerning public comment? Okay, thank you very much. All right, we will now move into our workshop itinerary. Discussion of matters regarding the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget preparation, including but not limited to: One, consideration of funding for Destination Marketing Organization; Two, municipal pool revenue and expenditure plan; Three, general fund revenue and expenditures; And four, other items needing council direction presentation at that point would be made by Tina Dersky. So as we move into this workshop itinerary, I'm going to have Julie Raymond come up first, because I know you have a 9:30 appointment that you have to get to. So if you will come forward and tell us about Art in Uncommon Places.
We would love to do that. I'm Julie Raymond, Art in Uncommon Places. We are a nonprofit since 2006, and our mission right here is to create inspiring, prominent, long-lasting works of art to the city, the gift to the city of San Angelo for all to enjoy and utilize, particularly for those who are underserved by displaying works in unique and uncommon places throughout the city. And this is Dr. Gigi. She is president of Art in Uncommon Places. So, our director. Anyway, we have gifted the city with over, at this point, 400 pieces of art. And that is done through, we strictly live off of grants and donations. And we would love some support from the city. All these pieces have, are inviting, and they're bringing people to the city in great numbers. We have real estate people coming to us to ask what the growth of the city's going to be, and they're promoting all of these things. We have created pop art, Paintbrush Alley, both of those are open-air museums, as well as the River Corridor that has our mosaic cars along that way. And then the Red Aurora, there's 50 pieces of art there. We have a mosaic fire truck that was community-built, where all the firemen come back and get there to be photographed and be a part of. With each one of these open-air museums, which we didn't know was going to be such a bonus during COVID, because you could go somewhere and be safe and still get to be involved. And these are all friendly things, environment things that encourage families to come here. And beyond us, this thing has grown. We have a stack of magazines that we're represented into right here, and these are each tab with all the artwork. We received the title of the Visual Art Capital of Texas, and we think that we were a big contributor to that, because everything that, in these advertisements, are pictures of the artwork that we have placed within the city. At this time, we not only donated these, but we're maintaining all of these pieces. And that has made it, Paintbrush Alley alone is having quarterly events, which are Paintbrush Market Days. That is bringing 2,000 people per session. That's 8,000 people to just that one of our sites. And on top of that, we've had funerals, we've had weddings. It's incredible, the support that we've had. And we graciously partnered with the city. The chamber has been great. We try to work with everybody that we can, but we'd love to have some support to grow further. And our vision for this upcoming year is very exciting. We think it'll bring even more tourism to town. So I appreciate it.
Are you willing to talk about that, or you don't want to bring it out publicly yet?
No, we have one event, which I hope everybody will be a part of, that we've partnered with San Angelo Performing Arts Center. And it's an art show called Artists for Artists, and it will be held in March. And I think it's going to be great for SAPAC, to bring some interest to them, and they're going to bring a crowd, and then we'll bring a different crowd. And that's going to be promoted all over, as well as all these things are beginning to hit. We are in more than one online magazine right now. We did get filmed by Atlas Obscura, that hasn't been published yet. We have, we're in the culture map. So we want to keep this going. And we literally work with volunteers, and our building is donated for $1 a year. So, you know, anyway, we'd love to have your support.
I think one of the things you said to me, which is important, because we do fund the San Angelo Cultural Affairs Group, but you're not able to apply for any funds, you said, because no one draws a salary.
Yes.
At Art in Uncommon Places. So there's no salaries. All of the money that you raise goes to all of these projects. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, yes. And we do, if anybody wants to look, we have, we've been in Texas monthly, more than one. This is very exciting, because this is very expensive to be in, and we didn't pay, so we're really jazzed. We've been in Texas Highways, Texas Living. We were listed as 13 things in 2020 to do in the state of Texas, and it has our artwork. And I think that's pretty exciting. And I want to thank all the artists, that most of them all volunteer their time. We may pay for the materials, some we have commissioned, but that is the beauty of this whole thing that we do, is there's like over 350 artists that have contributed their time to make us a destination and the visual art capital of Texas.
Do you have anything else? Do I have questions from council, or more information requested from Julie? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we're going to start the next conversation. Teresa, you want to talk about hot tax money and the information in terms of what hot tax money must be spent on?
Yes, ma'am. Hot tax money, every time we look at an expenditure for hot tax money, we do what is called, in numerous places, the Texas Two-Step. And it has to make, the expenditure has to meet both of those prongs in order for it to be a valid expenditure. The first of which, it has to put heads in beds. And that means, whatever the expenditure is, it has to be to something that attracts overnight tourists to cities hotels and motels. If it gets past that hurdle, then you can go into the second hurdle, and there's nine categories. Some don't apply to us, because we're not a big enough city. But basically, those categories that typically apply are, we can fund convention and visitor centers, convention registration, advertising, promotion of the arts, historical restoration and preservation, and then directional signage. Those are typically the uses that we look at. If you only meet one of the prongs, for instance, you have an event that brings people into town, but you're not listed in one of those nine categories, we should not use hot funds. And the same goes for the other way. If you are in one of those nine categories, but everybody you attract is local, then that project would not qualify for those funds either.
Thank you. I don't know that there's anyone here for the International Water Lily Collection, but I know we all received a letter from Mr. Joslov. You want to read that letter, and then we'll talk about it.
And the letter says, "Dear San Angelo City officials, we have been advised the city may be considering use of local hotel tax revenue for the costs related to a waterlily garden which is located within a San Angelo city park. We would note, state law does not have a category for local hotel expenditures that would allow for the maintenance and operation of a city park. In fact, state law specifically prohibits the use of local hotel taxes for general city infrastructure or operations such as park facilities. We would be glad to work with San Angelo on other authorized uses of the local hotel tax that would be beneficial to the city of San Angelo, and that would directly promote tourism in the hotel and convention industry. Please let me know if there is any further information I can provide on this issue. Sincerely, Scott Joslov, Senior General Counsel, Texas Hotel and Lodging Association."
So one of the issues that came up during budget meetings, as we were going through everything, was the International Water Lily Collection, which in fact, every September has a big event here in San Angelo. It brings in people from Japan, from India, all across the world, actually, and it's a major, important quality-of-life as well as tourism destination. The idea and the proposal was not to use it for operations. It was in fact, one of the things that you just talked about, and that's signage. I can't tell you how many times I hear from somebody, "Where's the waterlily? How do we get there? I don't see any signs. Tell us about that." And that is, the issue is trying to find a way to use money to better sign and direct people to the waterlily collection. There was no conversation about maintenance and operation of our parks, just to be clear. All right, now let's move into Destination Marketing.
Brenda?
Oh, yes.
Do I get to start?
Yeah. You're on.
So the last budget workshop we had, we had a discussion came up, and at that point in time, Diana, you came in with a $1,012.5 on the budget, which was the 965 and the carryover. And then the staff had had a number down there in the 800s, I think it was 8 now, I don't remember what it was specifically. But at that point in time, in that discussion, Tommy Hebert and I volunteered to come in and have a meeting and discuss that and go through it as best we could. Something I'd like to point out is with all other accounts that we have that go through the city, everything comes through a blue book. We get them itemized monthly. We don't get that on the Chamber CVB, okay? I'm sure we could if we asked, but the point of it is, we have this to look over, anything we want to monthly, it's ours, it's readily available on the city website, but this is something we use as council to go through and look at what we have. You met with you and Walt, Tina, Kimberly, me and Tommy Hebert met a couple days later, and we discussed about it. Y'all brought in a proposal of $965,000.
And $1,012,000. I brought in two.
Right. So we talked about the 965 and thought, okay, we're leaving this meeting with an agreement that we looked at 965. We went through some numbers, and I went back and looked, and there's categories on there that are significantly different in the budgets than what they were prior, which Public Relations, I'm just going to go through, goes from like 8,000 to 16,000. Subscriptions is up 15,000, just things that we had questions about. So I called and talked to you on Monday morning. I was in Denver. You and I talked on Monday morning, and I said, "There's some things here," and we don't know percentage-wise what DMO has of some staff and some salaries. And I think you told me some of those questions I had were confidential, because you don't know some of those people's salaries. At that point in time, I said, "Is 950 a workable number?" And I thought we had an agreement Monday morning that 950 was workable. And so I took that budget that I'd sent to you, and you looked over and said, "I see your 950 number." And I sent it in to staff as, you know what, I have spoken with Diane, here's a 950 number. This is what we're going to go with and present with. At that point, I thought we had an agreement on 950 was a workable number.
I had that conversation with my boss, then my boss and I had our conversation with our chairs, because I have to go, according to our bylaws, we have to go through our board for a budget presentation to present to the city, and then the city presents that budget presentation to the city council. We did not have that opportunity to do that through our bylaws. And according to the contract, the DMO is not even supposed to get a budget to the city until September, or by September 15th. That is how the contract written by Teresa James reads. So we hadn't even done that process yet. This budget was presented to me through an email by Tina on a Thursday when I was on vacation. I didn't see it, and I got it on Monday, was the only time I had the opportunity to even look at it. And so I actually prepared a statement to, because I went back and watched the video, so I could answer questions that were on the DIAS that I was not able to truly answer in the way I needed to. But in our conversations with our chairs, a resolution of support of $1,012,000 was written by my board and the chamber board in support of that budget. And there are reasons for that, and I would like to share those.
That's great. I just need everybody to understand the timeline and why the 950 was put on paper, and it was after a discussion you and I had had on Monday.
Correct.
And I said.
But it still had, I had to go back through my bylaws to see that I was doing the thing I was supposed to do, and I needed to get that input from them.
Understood. I just need everybody to understand why the 950 was on the paper, the steps we had, the questions we had, you know? Now, at this point, we're going to open this up to several discussions. I know there's a lot of people here that came from public comment. Our phones have been plenty busy the past few days. So at this point, I will open this up to anybody else that has questions.
Does anybody on council right now have a question, or we'll wait until? But I think the overall, what we have found as a council, and it will be something reflective in a new contract, is that we need different parameters. If September is your deadline, and our budget is not a September deadline, then we need to make sure that the contract reflects the same timeframe that in fact, the city council is reviewing the numbers. Because it doesn't make sense that you present in September, which is what you're only obligated to do, and I respect that, but we have to make decisions, because this is the process we go through. So that contract has to have significant changes made to it.
Understand.
That contract has to have more explanation on a more regular basis about the expenditures and the challenges that we might have. No one likes to put anyone on the spot and ask the questions, but I know this. Anybody who hands somebody basically a million-dollar check, and that's what we basically are doing when we budget $1 million, we're saying, "We're giving you $1 million." If you went to the bank and borrowed $1 million, that banker would ask significant questions about the expenditures, any changes in philosophy, or any changes in emphasis in terms of what you're going to focus on, and there would be a lot of questions about it. We realize that the CVB, which is what we funded initially, and that stands for Convention Visitors Bureau, with a primary focus on hotel rooms, heads in beds. We also know that everyone who comes forward to us and asks for money, the question always is, "How can you prove up heads in beds?" Because we cannot increase your budget or maintain your budget unless you have something that says, "This is what we did." These are the heads and beds we can tell you about, and that is the number-one thing on the information that Teresa just submitted, reviewed with everyone here. When you change the name of an organization, and when you change a philosophy that says, "We are going to become economic developers now."
We were always economic developers. Tourism is economic development.
Yes, it is.
Pure money coming in from visitors that has never been in this community before.
Yes. So, but we funded an organization called CVB, and that means it's a very strong emphasis on Convention Visitors Bureau. People who come to town for conventions, people who come to town for heads in beds. And so when we start to ask questions, what we really want to understand is, what did the CVB, which is the organization we funded, not the DMO, talk to us about those heads and beds? Because what we realize is that there's many organizations in this city who bring people into this city because of their organizations, and they put heads in beds. And yet, we are in fact challenged by many organizations that say, "Hey, we deserve, we need, we want." And again, I repeat, it's always about heads in beds. So I'm going to start with that, and I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to ask questions and make comments, but you're on.
Okay, thank you. And I actually brought all of the presentations I've done annually for the past five years, and all of them state everything you just asked for, and I have presented that to this organization in the past. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you once again regarding the budget of the Destination Marketing Organization. I'm sharing with you today information found on your own city council pages of the city of San Angelo website. The vision statement of the San Angelo City Council reads, "To be the Texas standard for opportunity, prosperity, and quality of life." The mission statement of the San Angelo City Council is to deliver excellence in services through best management practices, a dedicated, caring, and productive workforce, innovative solutions, and a strong commitment to fiscal responsibility. I took the liberty to pull the definitions of these words in these statements and share what the DMO has done to play our part in meeting this vision and mission for the city. Opportunity, a time when a particular situation makes it possible to do or achieve something. The DMO's success over the past five years includes a strong recovery that is trending higher in all areas of performance. Prosperity, the state of being successful, especially in making money. The direct travel spending and annual room revenues at hotels paid by visitors are back up at 2019 levels, even with the COVID pandemic hitting in both 2020 and 2021, and facing a decrease in prime hotel room availability in late 2021. Quality of life, the standard of health, comfort, and happiness experienced by an individual or group. The savings per household due to visitor spending in 2021 was higher than it has been over the past six years, except for a 9% drop in 2020. That number is $643. By saving citizens' tax dollars, visitor spending improves the quality of life for the citizens of San Angelo by freeing up monies that would otherwise be used for paying taxes. Deliver excellence, the quality of being extremely good. The DMO work and the DMO staff have been acknowledged with multiple awards and recognitions at the state level by the Texas Association of Convention and Visitors Bureaus and the Texas Travel Alliance over the past four years. Best management practices, a way of doing something that is seen as a very good example of how it should be done and be copied by other companies or organizations. As a DMO that is working closely with economic development to tell the story of San Angelo to attract potential visitors, help influence possible business relocations, and attract future workforce, our example was recognized at the State Economic Development Association Summer Conference through video interviews, serving as an example of how organizations can work together to promote a community through tourism, economic development, and industrial economic development. Productive workforce, doing or achieving a lot in a particular organization. The DMO has been responsible for the efforts to achieve both the Texas Film Friendly City and the Texas Music Friendly City designations. The DMO also researched, created the presentation, and testified on behalf of the city at the state capitol to seek and receive from the governor the 10-year designation of Visual Arts Capital of Texas. The DMO created content and submitted the applications four years in a row to True West Magazine to be considered a top 10 true western town in the U.S. We have been recognized all four years. Number two in 2019, number one in 2020, number two in 2021, and number one in 2022. The DMO submitted the application for consideration to the Texas Travel Awards and were named the Destination of the Year in 2021 in the inaugural awards. Those awards are not given unless someone submits an application. Fiscal responsibility, a duty to take care of public monies connected with government, especially tax dollars. Since the current leadership of the DMO came on board in 2017, the organization has taken the role of stewards of the public funds very seriously. In 2017 and 2018, unspent hotel tax dollars in the DMO budget designated funds by law that have a very specific purpose were returned to the city. In 2020, the DMO was proactive at the beginning of the COVID pandemic and asked to present to the city council as a proposal allowing the DMO to save $200,000 of their approved 2020 budget by cutting areas including travel, trade shows, and training to applies those dedicated funds to the 2021 budget instead. By achieving the results I've shared today, which have also been presented at every annual city council presentation by the DMO over the past five years, along with more detailed data, the DMO continues to meet their own mission of improving the quality of life for the citizens of San Angelo through Destination Marketing and Promotion. The funds are there, $1.6 million in the reserve. The results are there. The support is there. The businesses benefit, the citizens benefit, the city of San Angelo benefits. The DMO meets and exceeds the city council's own vision and mission statement. My question to each of you on the DIAS is, why is there talk of cutting the budget of the sole Destination Marketing Organization for the city that markets to visitors to come to our community, and the organization that has shown a seven-to-one return on investment for this community, its businesses, and its citizens?
The first thing I will say, and I'm sure other people have comments to make, is, part of the funding that when we increased the budget from what was eight-something in 2020, or 2019, 2019, there was lots of conversation about events that were coming to San Angelo, one being the air race, one was Cowboy Jubilee. Those are two that are top of mind, anyway. And we know that in 2021 slash 2022, those events did not happen. But there were funds assigned to those events that said, "These funds are going to be used, marketing expense, whatever, to put those events on." It is not because of the CVB that those expenses, I mean, that those events didn't come here. There are all kinds of combinations of reasons. But when you review and have a conversation about dollars and events, and those events don't happen, then one says, "So where did those dollars go? Where did those events go?"
I can answer the money about, there was $40,000 that was going to be dedicated to the air race. That money is in a contract that is done by the city, that is in a separate fund over and above the actual budget we have. Those dollars were already there, they are there annually. So they were, we were going to dedicate them, but we came to council because it was a large number. So those funds were not technically dedicated over and above that $1,012,000. And I will also add, the budget for 2022 was 965, but this council, because of our work that was presented to you, that you have applauded for every time.
And I have.
Was also given a $47,000 carryover by this council to use for this year to give us a million. I can answer the money about the, there was $40,000 that was going to be dedicated to the air race. That money is in a contract that is done by the city that is in a separate fund over and above the actual budget we have. Those dollars were already there. They are there annually. So, they were, we were going to dedicate them, but we came to council because it was a large number. So, those funds were not technically dedicated over and above that $1,012. And I will also add, the budget for 2022 was 965, but this council, because of our work that was presented to you that you have applauded for every time.
And I have.
Was also given a $47,000 carryover by this council to use for this year to give us a $1 million, $1,012 budget.
And so, I would say the following.
And there was no air race attached to that.
I would say the following as well. Then in this conversation, and I think Tom will validate this, the issue was, we believe the 950 is a good number. And should another big event come up that is not something that was planned for or anyone knew about it, that there would be consideration for funds for that. So, one is about a base amount, and one is about, is there something else two months from today that you're not aware of, that you need funding for? You can come back and have a conversation with us. So, I think that was part of the conversation. Was it, Tom?
When me and Diane talked on Monday, it was there's 950. Much like if something like the air race comes forward, that comes back to council. Another question I have is, Tina, and you can answer this for me, on the $200,000 she didn't use, did they give that back, or was that carryover?
That was carried over, along with a budget of $765,000 that year.
So, those things are in there and in the map. It's always a discussion. So, you are right in your statement, and you took the 950, went back to your group, and then you've come back here today.
Well, and the areas that you talked about with public relations, as we grow and show success, we look at ways we can be even more successful. And that was going to be including going to different television stations, like some of our other partners do in the industry across the state of Texas, Dallas, Fort Worth, Houston, Austin, San Antonio, possibly El Paso, Midland, Odessa, all of those places, to tell people that we have events coming. Other things that we are looking at are South by Southwest, a way to talk about our film-friendly, our music-friendly, and the quality of life in our community at a trade show where young people are who might want to consider moving to our community. So, yes, that is advertising and economic development and trying to increase workforce in this community. So, we are looking at all ways of promoting our city. I would also add, I love the folks at Art in Uncommonplaces. Most of the magazines and most of the things that she talked about today were ads we placed with hotel tax dollars. And I have a contract with Texas Monthly and Texas Highways, and they always ask us for article ideas. So, one of the places that we have always commented on, and Atlas Obscura that she was talking about, that is another one that we talked with through the governor's office. So, all of those things have been done through the efforts of the DMO. And so, the higher that budget, the more we can spend, the more we can bring back. A seven-to-one return on investment is a pretty good investment. I don't know that there's any other investment in this city that you get from that.
You want to talk about that seven-to-one and how you come up with that statistic?
Let me ask.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
So, I kind of have a gray line here in the center. When we talk about DMO, are we talking about economic development? Because to me, there's a...
No. We are, in our industry, we call ourselves economic, we are, tourism is the purest form of economic development. That is what we say.
Right. If you'll let me finish. I mean, that's kind of a question of some things that have come along in this budget. Is that an economic development expense, or is that a DMO expense?
Okay.
And so, when we're looking at heads in beds, to me, that's a DMO. I hear a lot of about economic development, economic development, and I get that, but there are parts, I don't know if those two are co-mingled or not, and in our conversations everybody's had the past two weeks, we tend to blend those together. And to me, I kind of look at your budget as a DMO heads in beds. All right? And if I'm misreading that, I apologize. Okay? But, long story short, I do think we use economic development quite a bit when we're talking about heads in beds.
It all starts with a visit, sir. And so, that is in our videos. That is in our promotional items. We want people to visit, because if they don't visit, they won't consider living here. They won't consider moving a business here. We have a video that has that particular phrase in it, because it applies to everything we do. Economic development can use that video. I can tell you that Goodfellow uses that video. A gentleman on the chamber board shared with me that he sends it all over the world monthly to try to get people to see why they should consider coming to San Angelo. And he thanked me, what, two weeks ago, for putting that video out.
I've seen the video, love the video. I agree. I'm just saying, when you look at some of the things we're discussing here...
Could you give me examples?
Well, so, if we use the word economic development, are we trying to bring a company here to town? Are we trying to bring individual events here to town? So, there's been questions here that go into like...
I can give you an example of some of that. I have gone with Michael and Mike in our department, when they have a site visit, I have gone with them. Anodyne Wool comes to mind. I heard the story of Anodyne Wool. I pitched that story to Texas Country Reporter. Texas Country Reporter came here and filmed their story. That had really not much to do with tourism, but it was a way to showcase San Angelo and a business in this community that meant something to Bob Phillips, and he is a beloved television personality in this state. Didn't cost me any money. I just went on a meeting visit with them, so I could understand what they had. We also look at makers as a way to tell our story. They are a maker. So, that is one example. Air Motor, Jana, who is my sales director, and I had a meeting with Air Motor and Mike Berry with Economic Development, because they wanted to bring a week-long meeting at that point to our community. So, it all started with a meeting. It is now transferred into an actual certificate that Howard College is offering to have a first-time certification of an Air Motor person who can fix those windmills. They'd never had that before. That started with a meeting that we were going to do. That was an economic development company who wanted to have that meeting. We wanted to be able to help them with the meeting planning and to do the blocks of the rooms. They all go together, as I see it. But did we pay extra for that? No. It started with a meeting that has now worked with numerous partners in our city to help grow something in our city that was much needed. So, I'm, I do use the term economic development, because that's who we are. That is what we do. It all starts with a visit. I don't care why they come and spend the night. If they spend the night, we are doing our job.
Answer my question.
Thank you.
All right. So, the question I had is, talk to us about the seven-to-one and the statistics in terms of how that's proven up.
We use the same statistics everybody in this industry has always used. We use the governor's office stats that come from Dean Runyon and Associates. They've used Dean Runyon and Associates forever, the governor's office of economic development and tourism. They do work together. They are all in the same building. The return on investment, we have a $1 million budget currently. The local tax dollars brought in by visitors is $7.4 million. Seven-to-one. We have used that in all of our lobbying efforts at the state. As you know, I have worked for the Texas Travel Industry Association, now Texas Travel Alliance. I'm their legislative co-chair. We are there to watch the legislation that goes in for our industry to ensure that things are done correctly and to protect the funding that is paid by visitors at the state so that we can market outside of the state. That is the, that is the way they determine their numbers, and so we follow suit with what the state does.
I believe everyone in this city who has a business, who has a company, who has family, who lives in this city are economic developers, if you will. So, when we talk about a one-to-seven number and the statistics attached to that, my assumption is almost everyone in this room who's sitting here today probably had some impact on that number.
I'm sure they did.
And so, when you look at it, every citizen, every business, every company, has had some impact on that one-to-seven ratio. It would be wrong to assume that that one-to-seven ratio is totally, the DMO, the CVB, is totally responsible for that. But your marketing, that is not to challenge the marketing, but I don't believe all of those dollars are simply attached to this effort. I think it's much broader than that.
Even if it was a three-to-one in return on investment, just from ours, I believe that is a very big benefit for this community and this city.
We would agree. But again, I think everyone who lives here, every company that we have, everyone who is invested in this city is an economic developer. That is what it is. The number of people who come into town because of families and friends, or the Christmas at Old Fort Concho, On Player Air, the ceramic show, the livestock show, many organizations contribute to that net effect. And we're proud of that.
And we promote those events outside of this community to people, so they will come here to visit. In fact, the question you had last time, when you called my staff up, who are not city staff, you asked what kind of events were in this community. Academy for Teachers of Young Children, American Board Goat Association, Concho Valley Council of Governments, Hale Family Reunion, Junior American Board Goat Association, Order of the Eastern Star, Texas Water Utilities Association, the Fourth Cavalry Regiment, Texas Association of Counties, Wild West Fest, Air Motor Windmill School, Catholic Women's Conference, Daughters of the Republic Texas Conference, couple of weddings, a couple of reunions, a couple of the Elks Club's district meeting. All of those folks reached out to us, or we helped and went after that business. Those are just the past, or the next two months. One was last month and the other. I couldn't tell those, I'm on the spot, so I printed the report, so you could have it.
Do you believe that the DMO or the CVB is correctly placed in the, in the chamber offices? Or have you wanted to have that reconsidered and have your office and you be a part of the Economic Development Group and the Business Resource Center?
At this point, I would rather remain at the chamber.
But there has been requests.
I have not made any public requests to people here.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments right now?
Oh, I just wanted to make a comment.
Yes.
If we, if we were to go with the 950 and then have Diane come up and ask us whenever other monies were needed, and we also would have the accountability, like the Blue Book, some kind of monthly accounting of what is being spent, that would be my recommendation for this, instead of the $1,000,001,250. That's what I'm thinking right now, as far as listening to you, because you already answered one of my questions, and that was about the events that you have that had been held up to date. So, you answered that question for me. So, that's my statement.
Harry.
I know that I've got a little personal, because I've seen these numbers consistently over the last four or five years, being the liaison between the city and the CVB, DMO. But I'd like to see this budget go back to the 965, personally. $15,000 in a multimillion-dollar budget is, is, is just chump change. I'd like to see it go to 965. Let them continue to do what they've been doing. And if we've got a major event, have them come back, as everybody said. I appreciate what Tom and Tommy has done. I, I think that's, that was appropriate to get where we are today, but I'd like to see it get back to this 965, and this, let's move forward. We're spending so much time on $15,000 that the citizens are going to say, wow! I mean, if you're talking about this multimillion-dollar budget and we're spending, spending 45 minutes on $15,000, I don't know. I'm ready to go back to the 965.
Well, I think the issue is not 965, it was the 950, as Tom said. So, it's not just the $15,000. But that being said... Other questions or comments? And I know there are a lot of people here who want to add public comment. So, let's start with...
And then let me...
Oh, go ahead.
So, when we had our meeting the other day, Dan, you know, we talked about four benchmarks to look at. Total direct travel spending, local tax receipts, DMO bookings and savings per household. So, we discussed a way to possibly track those as we move throughout the year. All right? Those are things that are measurable, tangible, and we can see from both sides.
Correct.
How would you, if you were going to structure a plan to look at this and judge those on a calendar year, give me an idea here.
I couldn't, I'd have to look at what those percentages are now, because if you look at from 2017 through 2021, as I shared, we were on a trajectory with no new hotel rooms at the time, even with our budget, as it was increasing, we were on a trajectory to be much more successful. But apparently, our 7.4 million that is local tax spending, that may not be something the mayor wants us to use since we are not credited for that. So, we may have to look at other opportunities. As far as bookings, I can work with my staff on how many bookings per year we can get. That is the one number that we can choose. The rest would be up to the council to determine what that percentage needs to be.
But going back to the point, we looked at four tangible...
Correct.
Benchmarks that we could look at and move forward with those is something we can discuss. Whether those up or down can also regulate the amount of spending we do, whether we're up or down.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And to your point, Harry, it's not about, the citizens would ask us to ask what $1 million is being spent on. It's not about 45 minutes of $15,000. It's talking about $1 million, or $1,012, or 950, or 965. So, we're not wasting time. We are evaluating $1 million. So, just to be clear, it's not $15,000. So...
With all due respect, I have shared that every year with my annual reports. I'm happy to hand those to you, so you can review them again.
I'm just addressing Harry's comment, not yours. With that, again, I think perhaps I should read this resolution, is it was sent to all of our council members, and that is Resolution San Angelo...
She shakes her head.
Resolution San Angelo Destination Marketing Organization supporting the full funding of $1,012 for the Destination Marketing Organization for fiscal year 2023. Whereas despite challenges to the travel industry imposed by the COVID-19 pandemic, the San Angelo Destination Marketing Organization has, through its marketing and promotional efforts, delivered a strong rebound of the local travel and tourism industry resulting in economic benefit to our community, resulting in tax savings per household due to visitor spending of $643, the highest it has been over the past six years. Whereas, through the efforts of the San Angelo Destination Marketing Organization, local tax receipts paid by visitors in 2022 have recovered to pre-COVID pandemic levels of 7.5, sorry, 7.4 million. Whereas, through the efforts of the San Angelo Destination Marketing Organization, following a 12% decline in direct travel spending in 2020, said spending recovered to 97% of 2019 pre-pandemic levels in 2021, exceeding the Texas state recovery levels by 5%. Whereas, due to the successful efforts of the San Angelo Destination Marketing Organization, in 2021, annual hotel room revenues reclaimed 98% of 2019 revenues after a 15% decline in 2020. Whereas, due to the outstanding efforts of the San Angelo Destination Marketing Organization, the 2022 Quarter 1 annual room revenues of $12.2 million surpassed first-quarter revenue rates of all five previous years. And whereas, the sustained investment in the San Angelo Destination Marketing Organization will, based on current trends and future potential, further drive continued growth and success in the critical travel and tourism industry. It is now resolved, the San Angelo Destination Marketing Organization Advisory Committee fully and strongly supports the complete funding of the San Angelo Destination Marketing Organization in the amount of $1,012 for the fiscal year 2023. And I believe this was sent by Griff Griffin, the Chair of the San Angelo Destination Marketing Organization Advisory Committee, and I believe it also was forwarded by Janet Carter to all of the city council members. So, with that, Griff, you want to come up and talk?
Mayor, Mr. Valenzuela, city council members, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm Griff Griffin. I live in the San Angelo Country Club community. Mr. Hubert's our councilman. But I'm here on behalf of the, as Chairman of the San Angelo Destination Marketing Organization. Our advisory committee is made up of hoteliers, it's made up of restaurateurs, it's made up of local attraction folks from the fort, the museum, visual arts, performing arts, state park, city and parks recreation department, retailers, many other organizations make up our board. Mr. Thomas, as he said, is our board liaison. We appreciate his support over the years. Obviously, Diane and I did not coordinate our presentation or our talk, because she said about everything I needed to say. The one thing I want to point out, the really bit of good news for... The one thing I want to point out, the, the really bit of, of good news for, for hot money is the first quarter of 2022, hotel revenues are higher than they've been in the last six years. I think that's really good news. That's, that means there is more hot money available. And so really, our, our question as the advisory board is, is why? As, as Diane said, why would we cut the budget when everything that's going on, everything from the DMO is going in the right direction? Everything is positive. I, I don't see a good reason or good rationale to cut it, to cut the budget. And so we ask you to, to look favorably on it and, and approve the 1.12 million dollars.
Thank you very much. If those who want to speak today want to come up and just sort of come to the front, so be quicker, so anybody else who would like to speak, please come forward.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Janet Carter, and as the mayor said, I am the 2022 Board Chair for the San Angelo Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of the board, we are, as the mayor read the resolution that was sent to city council yesterday, there were some differences between what the resolution that the advisory committee adopted versus the chamber board adopted. Most of ours, the changes were about the local community. And, you know, the mayor and I have had a conversation in the past about success builds success, and, you know, we have to have each other in strong partnerships in order to have a healthy community for all. And having a million 12 budget allows the Destination Marketing to further, you know, promote San Angelo and the wonderful community that we all get to call home. You know, I think we have seen over the pandemic, the past few years, the resilience our community has had, and what it takes to be a strong, healthy community. And when we come together, I think we can have an even healthier and more prosperous community for those who get to call home, and then also for visitors who are coming to see what San Angelo has to offer, and whether it's for a visit, for a business opportunity, for, you know, a night stay, just to see all of the wonderful things. As Julie mentioned earlier, we have a lot to offer in San Angelo, and I think the Destination Marketing has done a phenomenal job, and with the statistics that were shared in that resolution that was adopted by the Board of Directors, I think it warrants the, the million 12 budget. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Michelle, you look, ready to go?
Good morning. I'm Michelle Babish with Old Central Firehouse. I own two businesses in town, and one of them is a bed and breakfast, so beds and heads. I have to say, there's not a week that goes by when I talk to guests that don't say at least one that they saw us and found out about us from an article that is, the whole reason that article came about is because of the DMO. Diana and her team have done a fabulous job in really putting San Angelo on the map for all, I mean, San Angelo has a lot to offer. Three years ago, who knew? You know, and now people every day make comments to me, but like I said, not a week goes by that somebody doesn't, doesn't say, I read about San Angelo in Texas Monthly, true west, I saw you here, there. We opened our restaurant the worst time possible in April of 20, and, and it has been solely through just the support of our community and things that the DMO does to get people to come to San Angelo. That's why we're still, still in business now, two years, you know, coming off of two years of the worst two years that, you know, a business could possibly have. And so I credit a ton of that. I don't have the time or resources to do statistics, but I will say that a huge amount of people come to our restaurant that are visiting because they heard it, again, through the resources of the DMO and what they've done. But for our bed and breakfast, absolutely, I can credit a lot of the success to the things that the DMO has done for our community, and it just, you know, it's a trickle-down effect. So I, a huge thing is too, after, after COVID, I, I've been in marketing for many, many, many years, and so, you know, the worst thing you can do is stop marketing or slow down your marketing. I have not had to spend as much money as a business owner because the DMO is spending that money and their time and their resources to get people to San Angelo. I couldn't afford to do that myself, and I do have a small marketing budget, and we are so blessed that we get to spend that money on other things, like donating to local nonprofits, because the DMO is out there doing all of this for us. And, and again, they're doing it for all of us, all of the businesses, but I happen to have two that are directly, you know, I, I can say a huge success of our businesses is because of the DMO and all their efforts.
Great comments. Thank you.
My name is Joe Hyde, and I'm the Vice Chair of the DMO. Couple of things we haven't discussed that I want you to take into account is that there's two big things that the DMO has done over the last three years. One is it's unified the branding of San Angelo, Texas. Discover San Angelo, the website, if you remember 10 years ago, the chamber website was 400,000 years old. It was the DMO creating discoversan Angelo dot com that spurred into action the economic development website, the new chamber website. It's because of the unified branding that this organization brought. The second thing is, under our support as the board, Diane and her staff have been able to build systems around what they're doing. If Diane left tomorrow, those systems remain. And the systems mean, for example, Madden Media handles the social media aspect of it, okay? They have a system about how they reach out to targeted prospects who would come into San Angelo and hold conventions, and they have a system about how they allocate them to, to hotels, they have a system about how, let's say, you know, Thomas Hoffman from Wild West Fest wants to put on Wild West Fest. They have a system to evaluate that and figure out, how can the DMO, you know, amplify what this entrepreneur is trying to do? And I'll tell you, I mean, I've, I've covered live music, it's, it's part of my heart, this is a music-friendly city, thanks to the mayor. We are doing a really good job, I think, of, of coming out of COVID and becoming the center of, of live music again. And I guarantee you, a lot of, I mean, a week-long music festival in a town of 110,000 people, I mean, that was an incredible accomplishment, and a lot of that was done because of the guidance that Diane and her staff gave Thomas Hoffman, and also the financing. You have a River Stage and things like that out there that have, like, for, in 2019, at the River Stage had 19 events. There's 52 weeks in a year, right? There's a lot of things that they're doing to work with other organizations that can enhance the, the value of what they're doing for the rest of the city. I mean, it's great to give money from hot tax to civic events. I support it because they're, they're improving, you guys are improving the, the facilities and things like that. But with the coordination that we're doing with other organizations, I don't care who it is, we can amplify what they're doing with more money. I don't want 1.12 million, I want 1.5 million. But I'm just joking. But I, I don't think we need to cut this budget. This is, I don't know if you're a Civil War buff, you remember when Lincoln appointed Grant, the commander of the army? People were very...
It wasn't alive then, Joe, but go ahead.
Yeah, but they were very critical of Lincoln for appointing Grant. And he says, I like Grant, he fights. This is one organization that you can invest in that will fight for you, and that's what we're doing. Thank you.
Joe, if you'll just wait a minute.
Yeah. Uh-oh, I'm under interrogation now.
Yes, you are. Okay, so you might not remember this, but I truly do remember this. There was the, the story that Diane repeated about Colorado, the state cutting their budgets. I think every organization who's in tourism has used the Colorado story. I wrote an article to, at the Standard Times, when they printed it on a regular basis.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. And justified tourism and the reason tourism needed to be supported, and you ripped me apart.
It was...
And you ripped me apart, okay? Because you said, it's ridiculous, because you're talking about minimum wage jobs. And you went on and on about it. So I'm glad to see you've changed your mind, that your story's a different story, and that if I write that article again, you might be supportive of it and not critical of it.
In my defense, that was in 2010, and I was working for the Rick Perry campaign. And in your article, you happened to be a little critical of my buddy Rick Perry, but anyway.
No, I was not. It was, well, it was because he was cutting.
He was cutting, he was cutting historical tourism, that's what he was doing, anyway.
And so I thank you, I remembered your cutting response.
Well, don't cut this because it's working.
I have a question.
Thank you, Joe.
Ma'am, I have a question.
Yes, please. Oh, Joe, wait, 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 you're not off the podium yet. Larry, you're on.
Lucy surfaced this idea, we start with the 950, and then as events develop, new things coming in, that y'all come to the city council and make a reasonable presentation on it to receive that money. We haven't asked y'all what your thoughts are about that.
I think Lucy's on a good, good, good trajectory, a good vector, but I will tell you this, one of the values that I see the DMO is, under Diane's leadership and her staff, is building the systems. You can't build systems without a consistent flow of revenue. And so when you say to me, all right, we'll give you, let's say, I don't know, 765, but if you want more money, you need to come to us and say, you need another $40,000 to do this or that or the other thing, that's not going to build systems. That's going to keep the staff small, that's going to force them to cut things like Madden Media, that's going to force them to cut things that are getting earned media, you know, like the best, best, the most western town in Texas, you know, all these, all these destinations we're getting.
In the United States.
In the United States, I'm sorry.
Be clear.
But we're, we're, we're going to lose getting those kinds of things if we don't have a consistent budget over the year, because, you know, they have to figure out how many, how many slots, how many people we can hire, and then you have to develop those employees, that's a system. And then those employees have, you know, have to build systems for what those employees do. So it's, I mean, this is, I mean, it is a hard decision. If you're an entrepreneur, you know that when you add a new person on payroll or something like that, you're making a big commitment. And I'm not saying they're going to grow the payroll, but I'm saying they have to have something that they can count on. But at the same time, let's say, you know, Live Nation comes to San Angelo, Texas and says, we want to bring, you know, Kid Rock, you know, but we need $50,000 from this, you know, at that point, we're probably going to come to the city and say, hey, can we release some hot money for that, that particular project? Does that make sense? So build the systems, keep it consistent. If there's something extraordinary, extraordinary opportunity, you know, hot money is hot money, right? It doesn't matter whose budget comes from, it's, hot money's hot money, so.
You brought up a couple points, budgeting. So one of the big issues that exists, and we're going to correct it in the, in the contract going forward, is that your, the DMO's budget, Convention Visitors Bureau budget is January 1 to December 31st. The city's is September 1 to, I mean, October 1 through September 30th. So there means there's five months left, or there was five months left in the year when we started this conversation. So that's a lot of time. Second of all, we're not even into January 1, which is the next year. Back in 2014, when the world of oil and gas blew apart, what did you have to do as a city?
2014 was a tough year, and we all know, city management and staff, we know that we're, we're having to reduce about $2 million. That's a big ask for our budget, and of course, we did what we do to make sure we stay in the black, and we trimmed. And if that's what you're asking, Mary, I mean, we, we trimmed our budget and we made it through the year. Thankfully, things, things did rebound. But with that said, I do understand what you're talking about, Joe. Got you.
Well, I'll also say this, and this is where I look at my own business, that in downtimes and recession, I've been in business for, man, that 20 years now, in downtimes and recessions where you can make some resets and you can take some opportunities. While Austin and Lubbock are sleeping, if we're working on it, we can, we can, we can get up to the next level. I know they use the Colorado example and stuff like that, but I want to use the Texas example. While these other cities are sleeping, they're worried about their budgets and stuff, I mean, this is, this is hot money, and we're, and hot money is not going down. It's not going down. If we invest more into what we're doing, this unified branding, building systems about how we're doing this, we can get a leg up on our competition. And our competition are other cities, and primarily other cities of our type, like Abilene, or Wichita Falls, or Tyler, get a leg up. And one last thing I'll say is y'all had a discussion about economic development versus DMO. I think that shows that our, our systems here are working across boundaries. We're working across boundaries to make things happen, because we know, I mean, Diane always says, the economic development starts with the first visit, visit. I kind of think that's, that's probably true, and if there's a lot of cool things happening in San Angelo, Texas, right, then they're going to say, well, there's more happening there than there is in Tyler, or than there is in Wichita Falls. Let's go there, let's go see what it's like. And then when they get here, maybe they'll move their company here, you know, that kind of thing. So I just think there's an opportunity here to put the accelerator down a little bit more and get ahead of our competition. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought up Abilene. So you, when we start taking a look at sales tax revenue and looking at the performance of our city versus the other five cities that we compare, which is certainly Medlin, Odessa, Wichita Falls, Abilene, and San Angelo Texas. And right now, our sales tax revenues are significantly, we're performing significantly less than those cities. Abilene is kicking our rear end, and they're 90 miles away. So if you take a look at the sales tax increase dollars that we've had in this fiscal year that we follow, I think it's less than $1 million. If you take a look at the sales tax revenue of Abilene, for example, I think it's approaching $5 million. And so we need to understand what is happening in those, in fact, Wichita Falls is performing better than we are as a city right now. We need to understand what is going on in those cities that would produce those kinds of increases that we're not seeing in our performance. And it's multi-tiered, it's many issues, it's a complicated thing, but we do look at these cities and we compare ourselves and say, what are they doing we're not? Why are they having those kinds of sales increases and we're not? So those things will always come up as questions and challenges and opportunities for us, and we need to be able to look at them and say, okay, what can we do better? What are they doing that we're not doing? What are the issues? We want to be the leader. We want to be the best of the cities that we compare to. And you can say, okay, Medlin, Odessa, the oil and gas industry is driving those increases. Yeah, they are. Wichita Falls is a great example, they're a military community, they're about the same size as we are, and even they are producing better results than we are in sales tax collections. So we evaluate that on an ongoing basis and want to know what we need to do better. Do you believe more funding for DMO would get it done? I don't know. What's the answer? What are the challenges? What are the issues? And how can we do better as a community? Because I don't want the city, we don't want the city to be the city that has the lowest tax increases when we look at comparisons. We don't want to be that city. We want to be a leading city and revenue-producing, sales tax dollars. So who else is here to speak? Please come forward.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you, Diane, the DMO and your staff for all the hard work. I saw real estate, and the most important thing is showing how beautiful our city is.
Give your name, please.
I'm Mimi Clark. I am part of the DMO Advisory Board. And I cannot say how incredible it is to show off such a great product as our city than what the DMO has done. You've all seen images of something very low quality, we're all very image-driven. You're going to scroll right past something that's a very low-quality image, and what they produce is such high quality, high quality of life, and it shows off just how exciting our town is. And when you talk about what we're not doing compared to Abilene and how we can fix that, cutting the budget is not the solution to that. A million-dollar check, a million 12,000-dollar check, I fully support, and in return, it's going to bring in tourism to support our local businesses, ultimately providing jobs, increasing the quality of life for our residents, and keeping our household taxes down. I really don't believe that cutting that is the solution, and we need to keep moving forward with this budget of 1,012,000 in full support to allow them to fully do their job and to keep enhancing and elevating the city's reputation. Thank you.
Thank you, Minnie. Next?
Good morning, Mayor, Council, City Manager. My name is Shirley Spears. I'm a single-member District 5 resident. I am a board member of the San Angelo Chamber of Commerce. I'm also a board member of the Fort Concho. I'm also a board member of the Fort Concho, and I am president of the San Angelo NAACP. So I'm here today to speak on a couple of different issues. In one of my past lives in another city, I did some work with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I heard this morning the discussion and/or almost a debate about the difference between Convention and Visitors Bureau and DMO or Destination Marketing. I hope that what Diane has shared with us this morning, that we're all very clear. On basically, it's the same thing, but I don't want us to think that all that the Convention and Visitors Bureau slash DMO does is events because you kind of make them into just super hyped event planners, and that's not what they do. We talked about the economic development impact that DMO has had on this city. I think that I've been here now seven years, and I have seen the difference between what economic development issues make it and don't make it based on the partnership between the two organizations within the Chamber of Commerce, which is Destination Marketing now, and our economic development. When you're trying to get a business to come to the city, you're looking at other factors, too. Education, so they may have children, employees that are coming to the area, age, age range in terms of who these employees are, what it is they'd like to enjoy. So it's not just looking at the business that's coming. It's looking at the lives that will also be followed by these businesses coming to the area. I heard some discussion, too, about why we're trailing some of these other cities that we compare ourselves to. I'd like to point out that in 2017 and in 2019, we tried to have a small event here. I'll say small compared to some other cities. The issue that we experienced is that we don't have the hotel accommodations for large conventions and/or conference center space. And I know that some of those other cities that you mentioned have just recently, including Midland, have just recently added new hotels that have that kind of space. So that may have an impact on what it is that, uh, we're doing in terms of trailing. But I want to say also that you have to look at all of the other designations. I don't believe in the history in recent times where these awards have been given, that San Angelo has received the designations it has received. Those types of designations alone allow people to want to come to your city to visit. You have retirees who want to come and visit, and they decide they may want to return to live. So I hope that we will look at the value. I don't know any type of investment you can make and get a seven to, seven to one. I, I just don't know where that exists in today's marketplace, especially having come through COVID. And I think that a million 12 is reasonable. We listen to what Diane and her organization and what Michael and his organization does on a monthly basis through their reporting. And we know they do a good job of managing the funds. But I think we're just not looking at some of these other organizations. They market what they do. Destination Marketing markets the city, and it gets people from the region across the country and across the world. Diane has mentioned all the marketing dollars that are spent for purpose, things that are purposeful. And so I don't want us to think that some of these other organizations, whom some of them sit on her advisory board and are on the chamber board, are totally responsible for what they bring in. A lot of it, again, is back to partnership, and that is what the Destination Marketing Organization does. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Let me just correct my statistics as I just calculated them. So, uh, Abilene's sales tax revenue through, and we don't have the most current one. It was not sent to us yesterday. So.
I have it, Mayor.
It's, all right, but, but so Abilene has picked up 500, I mean, 5,28,403 at the same timeframe that the city of San Angel has picked up 824,235. And Wichita Falls has picked up $3,43,799. So those are numbers to correct what I just said, and we don't have the most current ones.
I have the, the memo. Kimberly worked on it last night. We received numbers yesterday while we were in budget, uh, meetings. What number would you like me to read off of it?
We don't need to. I mean, it's fine. I just wanted to calculate those numbers because I brought up numbers, and I should be very specific about those numbers when I quote numbers. All right, let's continue. Who else would like to speak today? Okay, that concludes this conversation on the Destination Marketing Organization. We are not, oh.
Mayor, let me.
Yeah, go ahead.
Make some comments. I have.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you raise your hand.
No, I have purposely stayed quiet throughout all of this. Tom mentioned, um, I, I was, uh, able to sit in with Diane and Walt and a couple of our staff as, as we met. I want to offer my thoughts and make a suggestion, which doesn't go along with anything we've heard up here so far. And it's one of those suggestions that nobody's going to like. So, uh, may, maybe that might have some merit if nobody agrees with it. I don't know. It was my understanding when we left our meeting with Walt and Diane that 965 was good. Tom stated that. And then it all started changing. I was not a part of some of those conversations, direct conversations. After hearing this morning some of the, uh, evidence, um, and support that we have heard, I want to, I want to toss to the council that what we do, it follows along with what Lucy said. But rather than the 965, let's allocate 975,000, um, to the DMO. And if there are large events that would be totally, uh, outside of that budget that they would need help with to follow what Lucy said, that then they come back to us. So again, I would propose that we fund them at 975, which again, we hadn't talked about. Nobody likes that, um, I'm sure. But that, that is what I'm going to recommend, I say recommend, suggest to the council that we, we, we.
Let me just, Lucy said 950.
She did.
She didn't say 975.
No, she, no, I'm not saying she said. That's the reason I said nobody's gonna, nobody said it. Nobody's going to like it, but that's, that's my thought.
Well, that's a new number. And from what I, we don't vote on this today, right? This is just open conversation. So.
Direction to bring the budget back to you in September.
Okay, we will give you. Thank you all very much for being here, for being a part of the conversation, and for all the support that you're giving Diane and the DMO. We can take a break. It is 9:47. We'll come back at 10:00 AM. This meeting is called back to order at 10:16, 16 minutes late. Thank you for being patient with us, and we're going to move on. Tom?
Go ahead.
You're on.
So to provide direction on the topic, we've just had quite a bit of discussion over. Mayor and Council, I'd like to propose the following, that we stick with the $950,000 budget. We take the four key benchmarks of total direct travel spending, local tax receipts, DMO bookings, and savings per household. We look at those quarterly. If they achieve those quarterly, they get an extra $15,000. That, if they hit all four of those throughout the year, is the $62,000 difference between the million 12 and the 950. They have a way to performantly get that back.
Okay.
Everybody get that?
Do we make a motion second? Just direction. So, and I'm going to give direction that we need to include art in commonplaces for funding, as well as the Water Lily Collection with specific focus on, uh, wayfinding for the Lily Collection. But the art in commonplaces, if we had not had their fundraising efforts, all that they have done to put art out in this community, it would have dynamically changed this community, and they do it with no salaries. They raise all the money, and they've had a big impact on this city. So I believe they need to be considered.
What amount would you like?
25.
Okay.
Heads and beds with our art and commonplaces.
She is. She does. Yes, Harry, she does.
They, they do qualify?
They do. I made sure in conversation earlier today to make sure. But I think they've added tremendous, and I'm so proud of what we have. All right, with that, go ahead.
We can stipulate in the contract that they qualify as long as they're using it for eligible expenses, right?
Well, it has to be, yeah, they have to.
Okay. And on, um, the Lily Garden.
Wayfinding.
Are you wanting an exact amount, or do you want us to work with Carl and bring that back on an amount for that?
Oh, I think you just need to budget it for 25,000 right now, and then, um, because it's going to take a while to pull all that together. So I think if you just budget for 25 right now. And, um, and it might be something that we say, we need wayfinding to better direct customers. It's been a big topic of conversation for a long time. So, yes, let me just finish this comment, and then I'll let you. So to me, and whether you say, and we could do this. Instead of saying the International Water Lake Collection, what we say is $25,000 for gateway signage for many of the.
Possibly marketing.
Things that we have, because that is, wayfinding is part of the hot tax money. Now, Tommy.
Um, wayfinding, if, if staff, I, I have a little information on the wayfinding that is really old information that the Development Corporation did a wayfinding study.
Yes, they do.
And it's probably been 10, 15 years.
10, not 15, but within 10 years.
It's been, anyway, I, I can give you a little more information away from this conversation.
Thank you.
Yep.
But honestly, wayfinding in the whole downtown area is, is needed.
Thank you, Harry, because I think that's correct, because when you have a business in downtown, the questions are always, where's this? How do I get there? Where do I find that? There's no wayfinding to tell people about these things that we're promoting and marketing. We need to do a much better job. Okay, with that.
Ma'am?
Oh, yes, please.
I just wonder if there's one other step we need to take in synchronizing the two budgets. Is there anything we need to do from our end?
No, with that direction, we'll bring back the, um, entire budget and through an ordinance and two meetings in September for first and second reading.
Yeah, so we'll, this won't be the end.
It might make the budget, I would say, a little wonky-looking if, if they have, well, that wouldn't do, wouldn't affect our budget, would it?
No, because their budget starts January 1. So it's totally separate than ours, so there's no.
Did I misunderstand your question, Larry?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if, if the city needed to do anything, or what emphasis do we need to put on DMO to make that happen?
Well, that's what he's talking about.
We changed the due date of their budget to City Council to September 15th a while back because they're, they're, you know, halfway through a year, and they're already trying to create a budget for next year. So with their timing of their fiscal years, the reason that we did that, but there's no reason we can't push it back to June.
We have to, because we can't be talking about a fiscal year that's different than ours and funding, et cetera. It doesn't match up.
No problem. We'll make that part of our agreement.
Okay. I don't even know where I'm at right now. Where am I at?
We are under the municipal, municipal pool now, ma'am.
I should have known. I see Carl sitting there. So Carl, Brent, you're on. Whoever's on, come forward. And this is on the municipal pool presentation.
Good morning, Mayor. Daniel, State Council. So yes, we're going to talk about the pool. So what we're going to cover is recent improvements to the pool, which you guys approved, uh, what we have added since opening this year, strategic plan for increasing revenue and possible options for long-term improvements at the location of the pool. A little bit of the history on the pool, the past couple of years. We have new plaster, uh, slides have been refurbished, which you guys approved in 2021, and the new filtration system for 2022. So I wanted to make sure that, thank you for that, because it, the whole pool looks beautiful. It's working very well compared to the way it used to, and, um, we've been making sure that we take care of the filtration system and everything on top as well, so keep it looking that way for as long as possible.
Seems like you've booked a lot of parties since you've opened back up.
Ma'am, we were, once we did open it back up and we released the dates for the parties that we had available, we filled up in an hour and a half. There was literally a line went out our door to the street of Chadburn, so.
People love that pool. They showed that. Thank you.
So the pool currently is a beach entry pool. Uh, we have two slides, uh, water features in the pool on the beach entry and water volleyball net and a water basketball go, which we've added in the past couple of years. Steps that we put in progress because we did, had to open late and everything like that, and we do not have the number of lifeguards that we need to maintain the pool open to the way it was in 2019 and prior. That's a, a national issue, getting lifeguards and anyone else to work, it seems like. But, um, we opened up for private rentals, which we were able to do with the number of guards that we have. So in the mornings, we allowed camps to come in and reserve that for private rentals. So it brought in a little more revenue instead of just keeping the pool idle every morning, and we were able to do that with a number of lifeguards, like I said. Adding after-season water volleyball league is what we're looking at. So the pool officially closed to the public on September 5th of this year. So, uh, we will actually add an adult league after that for water volleyball, since it's going to be still warm. So we're looking at doing that, try to get a little bit more revenue in there for the pool. Savings and maintenance costs due to upgraded filtration system, which you guys approved last year, uh, interactive games during the day. So we've been doing that this year, trying to get more.
How much savings did we get?
None yet, but we will, so.
Okay, so I just thought with the upgraded filtration system, we had a projection on what that might save us.
For next year. So.
Well, I mean, no, I just, because it's part of the slide, just, it says savings, so I just thought you might have a number.
So it was, for the maintenance cost, it was like 38,000, uh, and what we're projecting next year, I think is 15,000. So the interactive games that we've been doing, our staff has been going over and doing different things with the kids that are in there, hula hoop competitions, Hawaii-themed events, and we're giving just a little pass so they can come in with their parents the next day, next time they want to come back to the pool. So it's been a pretty good hit. But our main goal is to just get parent, parents to take pictures of their kids doing these events and put them out there for, pre-advertising for us. Steps in progress, private rentals of the, on the weekend mornings, and, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. The next one was already did that. So what we want to get back to for future is swim lessons, which, uh, is our number one priority in terms of service, or it should be. And we have not been able to do swim lessons for the past couple of years due to not having enough staff available to do it. So we want to get enough staff on board to do that, obviously. Uh, we want to find someone willing to purchase the naming rights because we have not had that for the past few years. Add a semi-private package to include food, games, and prizes for everybody. So when they come and rent the canopies that we currently rent out, we want to put it together so that they have, okay, you get this pizza or this mini burgers or whatever, and increase that fee. We want to do water exercise classes, such as aerobics or something like that in the morning, so people are in the water because, uh, we used to do lap swimming when we had the guards to do it, and it was not utilized as much as it should have been.
Well, I know some people who said they used to do lap swimming there, said that when we remodeled the pool, that it created a situation where lap swimming was not really, you couldn't really do that.
When we remodeled the pool from back in 2012, yes. So, but there is, there are still four lanes there. So it's not meant for a huge number of people, but it's not as long.
You got to turn around a lot more.
Yes, ma'am. We want to try to do the water volleyball leagues, which I mentioned, and these are all planned for 2023 season, so.
So talk about the water volleyball leagues. What, uh, for revenue, um, what would you project on that?
It depends on how many teams we get to sign up, but we're hoping to get 10, and it's $190 per team, which is what's on the, uh, the fee schedule. So we would go with that, and then they only play for 45 minutes. Some of the games could be over in 30 minutes. So we could just keep them going and get them in and get them out. But it would not be open to the public for that. It would just be the people that paid to enter the league. So it'd be two nights a week. So it wouldn't be a huge amount of revenue, but it'd be something else that we could use the pool for and bring in just a little bit, so. But that would all depend on the number of teams that we can get.
Have you done those before?
Not in the water at the pool. We've, we've put the net up that we have and used it and had tournaments and things like that, but we've not done a league in the, in the water. Long-term goals, uh, possible abilities, add tables, um, like the umbrella is right there. So some picnic tables, because we, our pool doesn't really have enough room for cabanas or anything like that. And we could rent those out like on a three-hour basis and charge a fee for 12 to 3, and then another fee from 3 to 6 after our staff go over and clean it real, real quick.
Is that tennis court, the tennis court that's next to the pool, is that utilized?
Uh, no, ma'am. It is not.
So how do we make that a part of the pool area and find a way to use that as an income-producing piece of land since it does nothing for us now?
Look to add basketball, volleyball, soccer, multiple, multiple-purpose courts, play equipment, extra, expanding the pool grounds, moving that over, increasing the size of the gate, and adding it for an optional rental fee. So if the people that rent the fee for the party want that as well, then it would be a little bit more of an increase, which we'll bring back to you.
Last one about adding the water sides and larger park to really draw in more people. You really need, they're going to have to offer more elements for different age groups, and so you're going to have a capital expense to do that. But really, the two slides are geared more toward younger children. So, you know, if you're going to draw in a. So, you know, if you're going to draw in a crowd, you need bigger slides, and you'd have to expand over there.
Well, it's dead property right now. It's just fenced off and no one's using it.
It's used for the, what is on that now, the bocce ball?
Pickleball.
Pickleball is on there.
Did you go ahead and convert it to pickleball?
Yes, that was the last request we had. So, that is what it's used for. But ideally, it was always intended for use of expansion of the pool, because we've got a very small.
It's been a hot summer. That pool's been really important, and I see it as an asset that needs to have a much broader perspective to it, to add more back to the quality of life here. We don't have a water park. I'm constantly hearing from people, we need a water park, we need a water park. Why don't we have a water park? So, we need to figure out how we can use what we have, broaden it, and make it more in a smaller way, obviously, a water park facility for our citizens. And I, it's important. Lucy?
I just wanted to make a comment. You've been hearing about the water park. I've been hearing about a splash pad over and over and over.
That will be talked about, yeah, next week. So, that'll be talked about next week. But meanwhile, I don't know if you saw the article on the splash pad in Kansas? How many people died? How many were infected because of bad filtration system that went bad? Seven people died. I don't know how many were infected. So, it's, we, yeah. Okay, continue.
So, the pool opened in 2013. It was profitable in 2013, 14, and 15. Since then, it has not been profitable, making money. So, especially the last couple of years, so 20 fiscal, or 20 when COVID hit, obviously, just like so many other areas, was majorly affected. 21, we did not get.
Yeah, I think we're all tired of talking about COVID and the impact. We got it.
Okay. 21, we did not get the number of lifeguards that we needed. That's why the revenue was so low down there. We couldn't offer all the activities. And then this year, obviously, we opened late, but we were, we are doing what we can and open the hours that we can to, and the parties that we can with the number of lifeguards that we have, which currently I have 11, and next week I'd go down to eight. So, that's not near enough.
In a normal year, you would have how many lifeguards?
28.
Well, I noticed on the human resource category, I had Brian print, send me the areas of where we have the biggest vacancies, and there were two that were really eye-opening. One was civic events, which was down 28 people, and lifeguards, which was down 17 people. And I'm not sure, Brian, what that date of those statistics were that you gave me, but those two were almost all the other categories, and openings were one person, maybe two people, but mostly it was a one-person opening. Those two areas stuck out like a sore thumb. That was big.
So, for 23, we are looking to bring in revenue of $140,000, which has been about our average since 16, 17, 18, and 19 that we looked at. And then personnel, the cost of lifeguards, and our one-for-all-time person that is paid out of that account is $10499, 999, and O and M is 65. So, we will be requesting a subsidy of about $30,000. But we do have a plan to bring that down a little bit, and that will be us coming back to increase the rental fees, which is probably overdue. Yes, ma'am?
No, I'm just shifted.
So, the current fees are $250 for two hours for up to 100 people in the pool. The cost of service was $332 for the two hours, and then the proposed fee that we would be looking to requesting to go to would be $325 for two hours up to 100 people. And then, of course, if you add more people, it would go up. The reason that that goes up, the $150, is because basically, whether you have 20 people in the pool or you have 100 people in the pool, you have to have the four lifeguards there. They have an action plan, the emergency action plan that they do. If they do three quick blasts of that whistle, everyone comes to figure out what's going on, and then they disperse, and they take care of their duties. One of them calling, one of them, if someone has a head injury, there's two people automatically in the water after they get the backboard there, and they're taking care of that individual. So, whether it is the 20 or the 100, we need the four minimum.
It just would seem that if, if that's the only expense, that the overhead and the amount of staff for 49 people would be different, I understand the lifeguard, versus 100 people.
I can understand why you think it would seem that way, but it actually isn't, because they need that four people just in case there's an emergency there. So, sometimes we go down to three if there's like 20, but we still have the manager there. So, that, who is a certified lifeguard as well, so we're still staying at the four. So, if something were to happen, God forbid, then yes, we would have the people there to cover it that have the expertise and the training to cover it. So, that's why we do that.
If you go back to the revenue side, I mean, the, one more slide back there. I would love to see the total revenue go up to $160,000, and I don't mean to say, put that in your budget. I want to goal you at $160,000, and I want you to figure out, if you could, again, this is going to be the budget that we discuss, but I really want us to reach higher, go for more, because I think it's a major asset and something that is of great need and adds a lot of quality of life to our citizens. And, and that might mean that you have to come back and say to us, we have some capital needs. If you want me to get to $160,000, what are the capital needs that you might have to get there?
I think that was well stated, we can do that. I do not believe they can get to that goal unless there are some major capital investments put into that pool, meaning additional slides and pools to where you can draw in other people. But we'd love to come up with that concept and bring some just thoughts back to you. And then if you all like those thoughts, then those are things we can go out and actually get design plans on and figure out ways that we might go about funding those.
I just think it's a huge asset, and I'd like to see us do that. We might not be able to address all those needs, but we can prioritize them and see where it takes us. If we have another hot summer like this year, oh my gosh. Tommy?
Rick, something was said that triggered a question in my mind. How many municipalities that do have swimming pools do not have to subsidize from their general fund their pools?
Yeah, and I don't want to mislead anyone. I mean, you can look at any of the major ones, including the, the water park-style ones in Abilene and Big Springs, and both of those are heavily subsidized. So, they're going to, we don't have to get the exact numbers, but they're.
I looked at Big Spring in particular, and it was a couple hundred thousand dollars.
It's a big water park. It's not a swimming pool.
But it should draw in more and more people because of the fact that it's.
I don't think the city operates that totally. It's, there was a private company that they brought in to develop it, I thought.
I think it's a city park, and the lifeguards are provided by the YMCA.
Okay.
So, that, they do have a partnership.
All I'm saying is.
I think your goal is admirable. We need to look at other things that we can bring in, and, but not to mislead anyone. Don't think that city pools are most likely going to be subsidized at some level, but trying to buy that down, as the mayor said, would be our goal.
I think it's an asset, and if we have to spend money to get to 160, it's an asset, and it is a quality of life issue for so many people here in the city, so.
If these fees are, if we're directed to include these fees in the budget ordinance, that will get them $6,750 closer to that goal.
I think we should incorporate those, so start with that. And again, we're not putting that as your budget number for revenue. So, but we do ask, I think with a lot of support, let's make that thing, if it costs us some money, it probably will, but it'll be a better asset.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. Also, just want to make sure that I pointed out that that 140 projected for next year is if we go back to a larger staff for lifeguards. If we have to limit it, obviously, we're not going to.
That's all, those, those things will happen. Hopefully, you know, there was announcement yesterday and another announcement today that inflation has started to go down. So, I think we'll see some changes, but we get it. If you don't have staff, you can't even do the 140. So, is it, but, yes, Lucy?
Right, just for my own knowing. When do you close the pool?
September 5. So, we will close it during the week on September, I'm sorry, August 16 will be the last day that it's open during the weekdays. We were still, we're getting ready to offer and open up to parties from 6:30 to 8:30, because we'll obviously have some guards. We do go down to eight, seven, or eight next week, but.
Is it school, people going back?
Yes, so as soon as they go back to school, then we close it during the week, but we're open on the weekends through September 5, which is that Monday.
Thank you. Further questions for Brent? Okay, thank you. Okay, now we move into the general fund, and you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. We're going to go through our general fund workshop. We'll talk about revenues, expenditures, and other considerations that have been given to us from departments. First, I want to remind, mainly for the public's sake, that there are three taxing entities in the city, the school district.
I need to talk louder.
I'm sorry. My voice is a little hoarse. The city, the county, and the school district all have a property tax rate, and of course, the appraisal district sets valuations in conjunction with those rates. 14% of our property tax base is commercial, and 71% is residential. The remaining 15% is personal property.
And how does that compare to some of our other cities?
We don't have that information available.
I did, I did look at, this is a couple of years back, I did take a look at that. Those numbers are closer to 60-40 split, 60 residential, 40 commercial. So, as you can tell, we're way off of what we should be.
Yeah, and we need our commercial base to grow, because that does take some of the burden off of our residential taxpayers, so it is helpful. Valuations came in certified this year at $6.9 billion, which is a 23.5% increase from the previous year. New property added to the tax rolls this year was almost $74 million, and the value of one penny this year is $667,000.
How's that compared to last year?
Yeah. Do you have that number, Kimberly? Kimberly will look that up. $540,000. So, property tax rate, because of Senate Bill 2, we have been capped out at the 3.5% increase this year, and we will be lowering the tax rate 3.8 cents.
I thought there was a three-year average on that. You get to look at it.
You can go back and, and, yes.
So, what you're presenting is a one-year number?
It's the, it's the one-year number plus the incremental that we can go back and collect as well.
Again, so when you look at property tax increases and you look at that 3.5%, are we giving back on a three-year average, or are we using the one-year number to calculate that 3.5%?
We're using the numbers that are given to us by the appraisal district. They do the tax worksheet for us, and we are using the 3.5% increase for the current year as well as the, I think it was, the unused increment from the last two years.
Okay, so it is a rolling average, if you will?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. So, sales tax, the 8.25% that folks pay on their sales tax is, of course, split out between the state, the city, the Development Corporation, and Tom Green County. The city collecting 1% of that sales tax rate. Sales tax in August was up 7% compared with the same month in the last year. Of course, you know, that's sales that were made in the month of June. Year-to-date collections are over the prior year by 3.5%, and we are over our revenue budget by $1.8 million year-to-date.
What is it over last year? And is that inclusive of the sales tax information that you got yesterday?
Yes, ma'am, we did update.
We don't have that information?
Late yesterday afternoon. Yes, ma'am, we were in meetings all day, and it didn't post until about 10:30 a.m., so.
So, I have it on my phone now?
We worked on it last night.
I didn't see it on my phone today.
And what was that, Tina?
No, we haven't sent it out yet. 7.03% increase. Was that your question?
Oh, the revenue budget that you said you hadn't.
Over budget for revenue by $1.8 million.
$1.8.
But sales tax over, year-over-year is what?
$694,000.
Which kind of goes back to what I was saying, comparing ourselves to Wichita Falls and Abilene in terms of increases. Now, we're a much better quality city, okay?
Of course, we are. Okay, and so this chart depicts what we're, what our trend line is over the last several years. We're projecting fiscal year '22, year-end on this slide, at just over $22 million. We are proposing a budget for FY '23 of 5% less than what we expect to collect in the current year.
And the year-to-date is, repeat that number, 3.1% up?
Yes, 3.51%. We will move on to general fund revenues. So, we're projecting property tax up $5.7 million, sales tax up $725,000. Alcohol and bingo taxes staying pretty steady, so we're not making much change there. Franchise tax is down $73,000. That's mostly due to television franchise fees as people move away from cable TV to more streaming services. Charges for services is down almost $300,000. $67,000 of that is related to fines and fees from municipal court, and $165,000 of that is due to decreased ambulance run through the fire department. And then other sources.
So, we go back to charges for services, it's down $257,000 from the previous year, budget or actual?
Budget.
Actual.
Budgets. They're budgeting.
What's actual?
I can give you a year-to-date.
Budget's one thing. We're 90, you know, we're 80% through the budget, so we need an actual year-to-date.
Just for the ambulance runs for the fire department, their revenue is at 65% of the budget, and we're 83% through the year. But they're, they run their payments through a billing service, and so it does lag a month or two behind sometimes.
It does every year.
Right.
You're still, you're a year.
But by year-end, we'll collect. We'll know what our total collections are.
And then go through the municipal court numbers again?
They are, they're projecting $67,000 decrease to their revenue budget.
Much better performance than last year's actual. Municipal court?
They are currently 50, let me see. Municipal court, 63% collected, 83% of the year.
And last year?
We'll pull up the year-end and look at that real quick. $2.462 million was what they collected, and their budget is, what is the budget for current? $2,171,000 was actuals last year. Budgeting $2,395.
And that warrant.
Warrant roundup?
Was, the first one we've done, and.
It's been a while, actually. The one that did this recently actually brought in an additional $100,000 in what was projected. So, this is something that we're going to be doing on a quarterly basis, rather than on a once a year, or sometimes not even in a year. So, municipal court is aware that they will be doing that on a quarterly basis, so I think those, those numbers really may be going up as well.
You still think that's a good number?
I, but as far as projections and what we've done as far as the initial work, this information came in a little bit later. We can definitely do a little bit of a projection to maybe add to that, to that revenue, but I just wouldn't venture to guess as far as what, if, if the future warrant roundups, how much more they'll bring in. I'd have to kind of talk to municipal court and see how we can, how we can structure that.
I'm just glad they're doing the warrant roundup.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, continue. Were you on there?
Apparently, if Tom Thompson said I was, it must be. Surprised he didn't turn me in for a reward. Surprised he didn't turn me in for a reward.
I'm stopping caps out at 2,000.
Okay, and then other sources, that's up $200,000 due to our projections for interest income.
That was down last year?
Yes. Okay, so moving on to general fund expenditures. For public safety, we're seeing a $700,000 increase. That is mostly due to the police department steps and loyalty pay increased by $200,000. And moving the fire department safer grant into the general fund, since the grant has now gone away, was about $400,000 of that.
Up to $697.
Yeah. Public works increased by almost $190,000. Most of that is in engineering. I think they implemented some changes for certification pay for the, for the professional engineers. And so a lot of it is from that. Look at the next one here.
Where is the category of equipment replacement?
It's, it'll be on the next slide. Transfers out. So public works also increased due to traffic certification pay of about $35,000. And an increase for street and bridge for the move to, to eliminate grade 11. That cost $42,000 to that group. Public services, there was an increase in park.
Can you explain that grade 11? Because.
Yes, ma'am.
So people understand.
Yes, ma'am. We talked about it a little bit at the last workshop, I believe, working with Daniel and Brian Kendrick, our HR director, to eliminate grade 11, which was a pay of $10 and eight, about $10.80. So that now our lowest paid, pay level is $12.02. So the cost to do that and to make, move those folks up to $12.02 impacted some of our funds.
How'd you come up with the 2 cents?
Brian?
No, Brian, that was.
Rhetorical question.
It was rhetorical.
Okay.
$12.02. I've never known someone to go interview for a job and the quote be, "You're going to be paid $12.02," not $12. So just wondered where the.
We just want our numbers to be exact and not vague.
Yes, that's where the grade started, so anyway.
Okay. Public services, there was an increase mostly due to the $65,000 for a reorg that introduced steps in the parks department, like creating a crew, a crew leader, supervisors, that kind of a thing, so that there's room for growth and promotion within the department.
Slower on that.
Sure.
Because we've not talked about this before.
Okay.
Say it again.
Okay. $65,000 to implement, I guess it was a crew and a crew leader and supervisors, to create growth and promotion within that department, so there's room for people to move up.
In which department?
Parks.
So. Well, I, I mean, I'm just, yeah, I mean, fine, I'm just, it's. I just wonder if, when we start talking about employees, there's many things in here, there are component parts of the total. And we kind of miss those because they're in separate little areas of conversation. So one is eliminating the, what do you call it, the level 11?
Grade 11.
Grade 11. So that's in this piece of it. And now we're talking about services of which, again, we're addressing the needs for increased wages and staffing. Which just seems like that all ought to be in one package of an overview of human resources.
All of these things have already been approved during the current fiscal year. And so they, they're already in the budget, the things that we're talking about right now. So they're already implemented.
Well, yes and no. I mean, Daniel has the right to manage things such as elimination of 11.
Yeah, grade 11, ma'am.
Grade 11.
Yes, grade 11.
But that wasn't budgeted. Was it necessary? Yes. Was it needed? Yes. But was it budgeted? No.
It was budgeted before it was implemented. We use savings from other departments to be able to do that.
Because we weren't able to hire people, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Development services, they just had a few increases here and there. Some for loyalty pay and some for credit card increases in planning and development services. Neighborhood and family services, most of that increase is due to, we've included an FTE for the animal shelter for an admin assistant out there. So that's most of that increase for them. Health and government, those increases are strictly due to loyalty pay. Administration, there's an increase in, of 200.
There's a government line.
Yes. Health and government were both loyalty pay. Yes, ma'am. Administration, most of that is due to an increase of $250,000. That will be transferring out to the property casualty fund. Council will recall that a couple of months back, we brought a budget amendment of $400,000 that we transferred from the workers' comp fund as a one-time fix to get us through this year. And so now we're going to plan for those additional and higher claims within the budget process. The total that we're increasing to go to that fund is 491,000 citywide, but 250 of it's in general fund. And then also.
490, and then 250 in the general fund.
That's all general fund, I'm sorry. We increased it, okay, sorry. And the contract with the appraisal district is the other part of that increase. It increased by $66,000 this year.
And that's by contract?
Yes, ma'am. And then the last change is for stormwater. And we have broken out transfers out, I mean, for stormwater, I saw stormwater there. The total transfers out, we broke out into more detail, so you could see where we transfer out from the general fund to support other funds. Slight decrease for Fairmount Cemetery.
Why is that?
There, he increased his revenue budget, so not as much support is needed from the general fund. The same, the same is true for Fort Concho.
Yeah, next page, please.
Pardon?
We're not seeing the transfer out page.
Yeah, our thing says.
Ours says transfers out, I'm reading it. I'm sorry. Technical glitch?
No, we got it.
We're good now?
It's just slow.
It was right here.
Oh.
Okay. Okay, so nutrition increased just slightly of almost $5,000. Equipment replacement, we're increasing by $40,000 to help support ambulance purchases. Capital improvement, we transfer out $250,000 every year to fund 502, which is our capital fund. And that is built up over two or three years so that they can purchase fire trucks.
Will we talk, rediscover some of those things as we go through the police and the fire?
We will, we will have a slide for police and for fire. We can talk about it whenever you'd like. Okay. Texas Bank Sports Complex, we transfer out almost $740,000 to support that fund.
How do we get more revenue there?
That would be a question for Carl or Brent, but I don't know if they're still here.
That's a lot of money. I know it's a well-used facility, that is not the question. We know it's an important facility. But when you're looking at funding it by $739,000, one would like to look at the opportunity for revenue increases or decrease in expenses.
Bulk of that is, is maintenance with water and those kind of things. So yes, tournaments, those kind of things. Marketing, whether the CVB markets that helps bring those in. Brent and them do some. I think in the last year, y'all gave him some, some marketing leeway. And I think you've seen a turnaround in the number of tournaments that were canceling versus what he's had brought on this past year. So hopefully, he and John Henry are both now attending in the, what's the group they partner with?
TAF.
TAF, to try and bring those state tournaments here. He's brought some pretty impressive ones just spur of the moment. So this next year, hopefully, we'll continue to see that grow.
Well, it looks like in the blue book, which is really good, it says total revenues are at. Yeah, oh, sorry, I'm in 2021. Let me get a different blue book. Sorry. Go ahead. So let, so tell me where we're at this year on revenue.
We, as of the end of July, we're at 83% through the year. And their revenue has been realized at 79%.
So will we make that budget?
We'll pick it back up in the fall with some of our own programs, so yes, I'm confident.
What opportunities do you see, Carl, for the Texas Bank Sports Complex? Can you hear me?
What opportunities do you see for the sports complex for bringing in more revenue?
A few more tournaments, perhaps?
Brent's coming forward. I'm just looking at a $739,000 general fund for operation of that facility. So the question mark is, what are the opportunities? And how do we start to decrease the amount of money required from the general fund to take care of the Texas Bank Sports Complex?
Brent, if you'd started, I might also add, when we built the complex, one of the main points, which we don't ever have when we have this discussion, is when he brings those tournaments, the amount of people that puts heads in beds in this city and the amount of sales tax we bring in from them eating out and all those kind of things. So his never gets the comparison of showing, I have this many tournaments and yes, we're subsidizing by this, but here's what it brought in in the big picture. That's the one thing we don't talk about real often. So go ahead, Brent, if there's other stuff.
Yes, definitely more tournaments. So this year, we were able to get national championship sports to come to San Angelo. Unfortunately, they canceled twice on us so far, so I don't have confidence that they're coming back this fall. And we were.
Why did they cancel? You don't know?
They went to other surrounding areas in West Texas and didn't come here. So we also were able to get a tournament called Son of Gods. They actually come back next, this month, or in about a week, next weekend, I believe. And they have a huge following. So they still by, still play by U-S-A rules. But it's, it's good because that guy, he's actually from the Dallas area. And this will be the second time he's here this year. And we're trying to get him to agree to come back again in the fall as well, which we're almost to the fall. But he has a huge amount of teams that follow him. So last time he was here, we had about 78. This time, we're projecting half, hopefully around 100. So, and that's out-of-town teams. So we're working on it, trying to get more people, trying to get more leagues. Unfortunately, this year, the number of teams that traveled to go dropped significantly. And that wasn't just us, that was across the United States, so.
The fuel costs and other things like that.
Brent, I know council gave you some funding to assist with marketing some of that. Are you still okay with that? Or is that something you need to come visit with them about?
Yes, sir. We were supposed to come, bring in at least 5,000, and I think we brought in like 28 so far back to that account.
Is that in the special events line?
Yes.
It's that, we've brought in 25 to 51 as of July.
Yes, and then last year was 37, I think, yes?
I don't have last year with me.
You're doing okay there.
Yes, sir.
We can pull it up, though.
Let's keep working on it. That's a big hole, so. Big hole, we need to sort of start diminishing that transfer. And just let us know what we can do to help your efforts.
Both myself and my staff are always working on trying to get more out there, so.
Tom, did you have a question or comment?
You caught me making a smart aleck comment over here.
Okay, you're online.
I don't want to lose it. It was like, we could shuttle them to the pool, Brent.
We could, we could.
We could find the lifeguard.
Yes, sir.
I didn't laugh, mayor.
Thanks for catching me on that.
That's why we have microphones. Okay, keep going. Thanks, Brent, thank you.
The transfer for debt service is related to a debt issue where ambulance revenue helps support the debt issue for the fire training center. Fort Concho, I mentioned. Intergovernmental is where we track all of our federal and state grants. That is going, our general.
Hey, wait, back up. I think Bob's here, right? Or did he leave already getting exhausted from us? Come on up here, Bob. Whatever makes you comfortable. You're so tall, I'm not sure if you stand. You can talk into that microphone.
Good morning, mayor and council. What can I do for you?
Talk to us about Fort Concho.
What would you like to hear?
Well, can you tell us?
I'm not sure we have that much time. If we're talking budget, the fort is in good, solid financial shape. Per the city requirements, I do believe we have the 90-day reserve fund. We should make budget on revenue. We will be under for this fiscal year in expenses. Thanks to mayor and council and insurance money. We are on the tail end of several major renovation projects. The last one, 145 columns that we didn't get on the first contract, they have, they have started. And as you know, if you've driven by the site, barracks and mess halls 3 and 4, all privately funded, are underway. Of course, the big challenge is the place is old. And.
It's historic, right?
It's historic.
So that would be old.
And like the director, it's old. And it needs constant feeding and care.
Tom and Harry, would you like to add?
I said, we have a new word for me. I'm not old, I'm historic.
But I think it's easier to keep something in top shape once you get there. And I'll be honest, the previous 10 to 15 years, we're not good. But we are at a point where we now have a jewel in jewel condition. And it'll be up to us to keep it that way. We face the same challenges as the other city departments and divisions and staffing, although I have every hope that within the next 30 to 60 days, we will be fully staffed for the first time in three years. And it's just the marketplace. It's not something we individually have any control over. But HR has done some good service on elevating entry-level salaries, and I think that will help. And I think the future is bright.
Ready for Christmas?
No. I need every day, and I'll see you on Friday, 3 p.m. local time, December 2.
Questions for Bob from anyone? Keep it going, it's a jewel.
We thank you for your support.
I'm glad you waited all day long for, for that. Now you may go to intergovernmental.
Okay, so general fund support for the intergovernmental fund is increasing this year because we lost the grant that we were receiving from the state for emergency management. That was about $60,000. And we do split the cost of emergency management with the county, so it wasn't quite as impactful as it could have been. But, and then stormwater, that 135,000 we transfer.
What's, totally what's in, is that totally 399 is what funds the EMS?
Oh, no, ma'am.
Okay, so discuss that a little bit, or.
Let's see.
I think most of us don't know what intergovernmental totally means.
It's all of the different grants that we receive from state and federal government. I can read you out a few of them to give you an idea of what we're talking about.
Just read the number one, one of the biggest ones, so we know.
COPS grant, safer grant, the American Rescue Plan Act, rapid rehousing, Chadburn Street grant, the airport ramp grant. So we received some grant money for Riverbank stabilization.
Where are we on Riverbank stabilization?
So the hotspots that we had talked about before, they have done. On the other, their work, Al is putting out for a design on the, for the whole perimeter from Johnson Dam all the way to the Bell Street. Because there's issues all along there will have to be addressed. The reason we have to go up and have it designed is because you have to have a LOMAR and a CLOMAR and whether you change the elevation and whether you cut the bank, there's all these rules. So that, he has been working with Shane Kelton and their group. And the problem was finding someone who was willing to do it. And so they have finally identified someone with Fries and Nichols that they're working with. And you're going to be seeing that. And so it's going to come back to you. And I'll tell you, in the long run, you're going to need to look at funding for some things there.
My concern is we, they have, it, for all kinds of reasons, but that we identify them, and then by the time we get to them, they've continued to deteriorate to the point that total collapse is required. I just, how do we get ahead of it? So we don't have a total collapse.
You do this full design and you fund a, a bank stabilization for that distance all the way from Johnson Dam to Bell. Which is going to be basically what we did on the rest of the river. When we did all of that. In this case, you won't be doing as many fancy areas, so a lot of it will be more of the riprap. But because of the way the laws are written, the LOMAR/CLOMAR has to do with whether you change the level of the river or not, whether it's up or whether it's down. And we're required to do that, so it becomes quite complicated. But the way to get ahead of it is to do it all. Now, we can do it in chunks, you know, phase one, that we've told them on the design, is the first. Now, we can do it in chunks, you know, phase one, that we've told them on the design, is the first part from Johnson Dam, basically to back behind the funeral home, that first chunk. And then take the next chunk and the next. But that's why we're having, we're asking for the design at this point to be done for the full distance, where you can just keep going. Versus having to stop and then go back and do all that over again, because the design won't change. Not good news, but the truth.
I mean, we just can't afford to let them totally collapse like they have. I mean, that, when we-
Those hotspots, and they've, there's ones where there's a channel going in, that they're going to reconstruct those channels. But you're right, it continues to deteriorate. It will not stop until we do the entire distance. And you'll just continue to have one after another somewhere.
River is one of our big assets. Any other questions from Intergovernmental from anyone? Okay, let's move on to Stormwater, or there might not be.
That is the money we transfer out to the Stormwater Fund to cover the cost of mowing the rights of ways.
So let's talk through the included, the IT cybersecurity position, animal services, which you talked about, right? And the property casuals. So the only one we didn't talk about earlier was the IT cybersecurity, but I talked to that because we know it's important. Michael, you want to talk?
It is important, it is important, Mayor. Bucky's on his way.
Good morning, Council. My name is Bucky Hasty. I'm the IT Director for the City of San Angelo. You all know that the need to focus on cybersecurity has been increasing exponentially over the last few years. Y'all got an email from me yesterday, probably, about an incident that occurred that we had to react fast to. And right now, the dude is really being shared between myself and my network engineer and another systems analyst that I have. But just to give you a couple stats, there are up to 30 targeted attacks per day on our firewall from an outside source. And that doesn't sound like a lot, but that's 30 times somebody is singling the City of San Angelo's hardware out that's over there in City Hall, and they're trying to compromise our network. Our email security appliance, it processes 6,000 to 7,000 emails per day. A thousand of those, I think, are Tommy's spam mail that you get every day that you forward me.
Bucky's keeping all the spam off mine.
But all of our users are always targeted for phishing and social engineering schemes. IT needs a position whose sole focus is to monitor and evaluate these threats so they can be anticipated and prevented.
How many again, per day?
Emails are hitting the firewall.
Firewall?
30 attacks directed at our firewall.
And so that position is funded in this budget, right? So you've got the staff to do that. Okay.
So this is a summary of the general fund?
I asked earlier about the issue about equipment, and so-
It's coming up on a slide.
Well, why aren't we doing it before we do the total revenue and expenditure?
Yeah, this is just a summary, and then we'll go on to marginal revenue later, after we talk about the slides. This is just showing you that you have $4.3 million in marginal revenue.
No, but that's my issue. I want to know what our needs are in terms of equipment.
That's, that's the next slide. Not the next slide, sorry. The next slide is a chart, but it will be right after these slides. This is just showing the FY '23 budget, showing the amounts, property taxes at 50% of our revenue budget now, and with sales tax at 25%. Public safety is 53% of the expenditure budget, with public works, the next highest at 12%. That does include the marginal revenue and a separate function, so when marginal revenue is directed, it will move, of course, into these other percentages as we budget for it and the way that we're directed to budget.
Well, here's my concern. Tell me whichever slide it is, but in our conversations that we had on the budget, the one number you threw out at me was that there was 500, there was a $500,000 need or request for equipment replacement. That number had to come from somewhere.
I don't know if that was an exact amount, but that would be-
Well, if it was 499, it's still-
Shane or Patrick could probably give us a better idea of what the needs are there. And we do have a slide for that, too. So these are the requests from the Public Works Department. The additional equipment replacement, of course, and then a grant administrator position for grant writing.
Well, okay, so is this part of that additional $500,000 that you brought up that was needed to be financed? And it's not included in the budget? Where is that?
I would have to ask Shane and Patrick what amount they requested, because I don't specifically know that it's exactly 500,000.
It probably isn't exactly, it's just the number you threw out in the meeting, so I'm just using your number.
Okay.
We do have an equipment replacement budget that's been talked about and placed in the budget itself. So this is an additional amount the mayor is talking about, so I want to make sure that we're clear on that.
Yes, we're already transferring 1.54 million to equipment replacement in the current budget, so anything else would be above and beyond that.
Well, I know Mr. Kramer does a spreadsheet on all the equipment we have, the expected lifetime on it, and the approximate year that that equipment would need to be replaced. Does our current budget take into consideration all the needs based off of his projections in terms of equipment? Because, again, I would have never even said anything, except you guys threw out to me, there was $500,000 that was not included in this budget that would not, would need to be addressed in terms of additional needs. So that's the reason I'm asking the question, because I don't want to know, in November, all of a sudden, you guys come and say, well, we're going to need $500,000 worth of more equipment that we didn't get in our budget. I just want to make sure, because you have two things. You have people we need and equipment we need.
And we do have some amount available in our projections that we'll share with you later on in the discussion that could be available for equipment replacement. But I'll let Shane talk to what the needs are.
Yes, ma'am. When we look at, when we look at the needs across the organization as a whole, and we look at across, and this is general fund, because we actually, you know, water fund supports water fund, stormwater fund supports stormwater fund, so. But as we look at this, I mean, and we're talking a lot of, not necessarily fire trucks, but general fire admin. We're looking at all the, for PD, we're looking at public works, and all of those areas. And so if we look at where we are on our equipment replacement schedule, over all of those, we're way past what our ideal would be on replacement of a lot of those. And so, but we work-
That's the reason I'm asking the question.
And so, on our ideal schedule. And so, but we work very diligently every year, year after year, going through that. And of course, you know, we do the equipment leasing, things like that, when the markets are favorable for us to do those type of things, we enter into those type of agreements, and that's helped us, carry us a lot moving forward. But as we look at this, and especially the past, you know, the past two years have just been crazy with the percent increases on prices of equipment, availability of equipment, those type of things. But as we're looking at it moving forward, we did ask just for basically a 30% increase, again, just to help, which is about 458,000, at kind of where we are existing now. But again, just to help us keep up with inflation was basically, and keep up with where we're at.
Is that 458,000 in our budget numbers that we're looking at today?
No.
Shane, is that all in the general fund?
Yes.
Okay. There is not, that amount is not in the current budget.
See, that's why we have to talk about it. If he's saying, because we have, again, two things. We have needs for people, and we have needs for equipment. You can hire people, but if we don't have the equipment that they need to get the job done, then that's a problem. We've got to have both. We've got to have the people and the equipment. And if you have needs for $458,000 worth of equipment that has already kind of expired in terms of its useful life, how do we do the job?
Yes, ma'am. Again, we have been looking at other creative ways to, again, manage that and manage the budget with what we have. And we also look at the equipment, and as we take stuff, as we remove equipment from our fleet, you know, we look at reassigning equipment. If we have equipment that is in better shape out of the water fund, that can be transferred back over into something into the general fund, because it's still, it's, has more, it's in better shape than what we have in this fund, then we will move it and we operate-
One's bad and the other's worse.
Yes, ma'am, in general terms, but we work through that, and so we manage those as well. Again, we've seen some very significant increases in the cost of all vehicles, whether that's police, fire, ambulance, all of those, we've seen some significant increases. And of course, as we, as we get those increases and we see those, of course, it diminishes our buying power with what we have existing. And so, again, our request going into this year was just asking for an increase in that line item so we can keep up with the inflationary costs that we're seeing across the industry as well.
And the reason I ask, and the reason it's a big thing for me to do right now today, is we have marginal increase in, we have marginal dollars at 4,007, is that right?
Four, three, I think.
Four, three. So if we have marginal dollars available for 4,003, but we have a $458,000 need for equipment that is not in this budget, we need to get it in this budget.
Mayor, I have a couple of suggestions. And we do have almost $200,000 left that hasn't been allocated in our projections. So we could add that into the budget. We could also use a one-time funding source to shore up the difference, such as-
Fund it in a regular budget.
ARPA funds or the sales tax surplus.
That's where it belongs.
So we'll get to that after we go through the rest of our considerations.
I just want to make sure we understand, we have a $458,000 need for equipment-
Yes, ma'am.
That is past its life expectancy, and you can't do the job we need you to do, or your staff to do, if we don't get you appropriate equipment.
I was going to say, I do understand that, too, Mayor, and we'll get to the considerations, but we can't do the job without the employees either, so.
That's my point. I said employees and product.
I want to emphasize the employees especially, because that's a big topic that we'll talk about here in just a little bit.
And we will, but I want to make sure everybody's aware, we've got a $458,000 need for equipment replacement.
We understand.
Okay, Mayor, we'll go back to where we were in the presentation, I guess, the street infrastructure fund. We are projecting an increase to that revenue budget of almost $78,000 for fiscal year '23. And this is where we start all of our considerations. We just wanted to remind you that you did fund the COPS grant. We are still in process of fully putting that on the general fund, but there will be some increase that's been included for that here in this current budget. Do you, this is where we can talk about any other police department discussion that you wanted, that you asked about earlier, Mayor.
Okay, so on the, well, the police, all right, so on the police department COPS grant, this is the five additional employees that have been funded over a series of five years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is that also inclusive of the vests?
No, ma'am.
But that's somewhere we bought them, right?
That's in Fund 501 in our equipment replacement fund.
Okay, so that's just the grant that we're just looking at?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We're just reminding you that you did fund this, and that we're not finished moving it into the general fund. As it moves into general fund, it'll increase a little bit each year.
It was the first year, I mean, it was a grant?
It was a stepped-out grant. Basically, we got a full amount, and then it drew down to 75%, 50%, 25%, and then the city takes over the full cost of it, so.
Similar to the fire department grant that we received, the SAFER grant, that's now fully in the general fund. It's just a reminder to you that that cost will increase until we have the full amount in the general fund.
Is that four years or five years?
I think it was a five-year grant, pretty sure.
Okay, so, continue.
Okay, fire department requests include continuation of the peak hours ambulance. We usually recommend using their charity care reimbursement for Medicaid and uninsured patients for that. Bunker gear replacement, they have a need. It's approximately half a million dollars. We would also recommend a one-time funding source for that, because they do not need it in their annual budget. They need it probably every, I think it's every five years. I'd ask Chief Brody about that, but, and then the annual fire truck replacement.
I see he's head shaking. I'm not sure what you're shaking it about, but.
Chief Brody, would you like to come?
Good morning, Council. Good morning, Mayor. Chief Brody, Fire Department. Your question was the replacement timeline on bunker gear?
Yes.
Okay, that is regulated by the NFPA and adopted by Texas Fire Protection, TCFP, and it's every 10 years replacement.
You would not need it in your annual budget, then?
We already have bunker gear replacement funds available in our annual budget, and that's enough to fund approximately 50 sets of gear. And that's to replace the gear that is expiring every year, because we have kind of got it titrated out where it's about 50 sets of gear have to be replaced a year. Well, we have enough funding to purchase about 60 sets. Well, Texas Fire Commission, or actually, rephrase that, the National Fire Protection Agency, NFPA, has made a recommendation, at this point, to replace, to have two sets of bunker gear for every firefighter on the department. Currently, we have about 50% of our personnel that have two sets of gear, but we can only purchase, in our current budget, an additional 10 sets of gear. It's going to take us 10 years to get that other 90 people outfitted with gear, and by then, the first 90 are expired. So we're never going to catch up with that, a little bit of supplement or stipend. And at some point, the Texas Fire Commission's going to adopt that NFPA, and it'll turn into a recommendation to an unfunded mandate, and we're going to have to do it eventually. Chief Dunn kind of saw the writing on the wall a couple of years ago and started this program. And of course, we need to continue on with it before we are stuck with a $600,000 or $700,000. We got to have this funding right now, this year, when we may not have the funds.
We have it funded in this year's budget for-
He has the 60 that he's able to replace every year, but he needs an influx of about half a million dollars to get everybody to two full sets of gear. And then moving forward, he'll be, he'll have it in his annual budget to be able to replace those on a schedule.
And I do have a little bit better figure than half a million. I know that half a million just kind of, it's kind of sticker shock. It's closer to 400,000. I know it's not that much less, but-
A hundred thousand is a big deal around here.
A hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. So that 500,000, that was just, because I am unsure of what a couple of the costs would be, so I forecasted a little bit high initially during the target increase, and now I have a more realistic number around 400,000. To completely fund two sets of gear for every member on the department.
So if we didn't have that in this year's budget, if, but if what we ended up doing was, instead of having you, I'm just throwing this out, I'm not telling you this is what I'm recommending, it's just a suggestion. So if all you can do is buy 10 more this year, does the 10 this year need to go to 20, and then you start decreasing the amount instead of 10 years and a five-year window?
So one thing that I am concerned about, because we do have some of this American Rescue Plan Act money available now, I don't know what Texas Fire Commission's decision's going to be and what their timeline looks like for making this a mandate. And we do have funds available now, but what's going to happen in three years when TCFP says you shall, instead of you should? And then we're a $500,000 or $300,000 capital purchase that we are, we don't have a choice but to make. If we wait three years, then we're going to have 30 extra sets of two, two sets for each person. But then we're also going to drop off on the other end, on the expiration side. And it's, it's kind of a balancing act between the first set of gear and the second set of gear, which gear is expiring at the certain time. And of course, ideally, you would want a five-year separation. That is a very tough moving target to hit. And we've done a fairly decent job, and like I said, we're hitting about 50% of our personnel now with two sets. Next year, our safety officer and I have already looked at projections for next year on how much gear to purchase. And we're having about 50 sets expire, and I told them to take a look at 60 sets. And we may not even be able to fund that until I get numbers in, because October 1st, bunker gear is going up 25% in cost. So I need to, I'm trying to get something figured out before October 1st, so we, if we order-
And that's the 400,000.
Yes, ma'am. So after October 1st, that number probably will be closer to the 500.
If a clarification, Chief, that 400,000 gets you the full set of redundant bunker gear that you need at this point, is that correct?
That's a full set for, two full sets for every member on the department.
And that's what we're recommending as well. We want to make sure we do it now.
And with our current budget, we're able to maintain that year after year after year, and we just got to get-
Once we make the initial purchase, you can manage the expense and cost on an ongoing basis, but we just need to take-
Just a one-time expense. Get me, get me over that little bit of hump. Get me over that hump. Just a one-time expense. Get me over that little bit of hump, get me over that hump, and then we can maintain as needed.
Questions for Chief Brody? Yeah, please.
Chief Brody, does this account, I mean, if you're getting your bunker gear, it's for X number of people?
Correct.
Our department's gonna grow over time, I mean-
Yes, sir, it will grow over time, and of course, the cost of this gear is gonna grow over time. Am I gonna say that I will not come back in a couple of years and ask for an increase in our bunker gear replacement? That's not what I'm saying, because we are going to have a 25% increase in October. We've already looked at forecasting, we can handle that for the next year. And if we have an increase in staff, of course, we're gonna have an increase in bunker gear numbers as well. And it may be at a later date, having to come back and say, well, I need in, but it won't be a large dollar amount. It's not gonna be $100,000 because I can't outfit 10 more people, so.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, Chief Brody.
Did you want me to go ahead and cover the fire truck allocation while I'm here?
Sure, yeah, you're here, please.
So approximately 15 years ago, Chief Dunn kind of, I'll just give you a little bit of background on this. Chief Dunn set up a cash flow system to cash flow our fire trucks, and the dollar amount of $250,000 was allocated. Well, 15 years ago, a fire truck cost about $250,000. Well, now it's $700,000. So the replacement program, and I'm gonna start quoting NFPA and TCFP again. So the National Fire Protection Agency recommends a 10-year replacement on a fire truck and a 15-year replacement on a ladder. Because of our decreased run volume and our maintenance program, we have pushed that as far as we think we can, which is a 15-year replacement on a engine and a 20-year replacement on a ladder. Well, with this current allocation of 250,000 and the cost of a truck being 700,000, it takes me three years to buy one truck, and with a fleet of 10, that's 30-year replacement. I don't know anybody that wants a 30-year-old fire truck showing up to the house being a primary resource to put out the fire. We currently have three vehicles on, in our fleet that are 30 years old. Now, they are reserve vehicles. They are in there in case the frontline units need to be maintained or sent in for maintenance or they have catastrophic failure. We have a reserve unit in its place. In order to move us back to a 15-year replacement, we basically need to double that fund. So we get 250 in there now. In order to move back to 15-year, that fund would need to be about 500. And I'm not necessarily proposing, I need 250 this year, but I would really like to start moving in that direction. And I understand, that's a, that's a big price tag. That's a big price tag. And, sorry, if we could do maybe over the next three years, maybe hit a little bit a year, 100 this year, 100 next year, 100 the third year, not only will that account for that 250, but it gives me a little bit of margin for inflation, and just like Shane said, inflation is beating us all up right now.
Yeah, it is, but it is projected to go down, so, but going down doesn't mean we know how fast and when, so-
Right.
We think we've seen this peak of the inflation, but we don't have any guarantee on that.
Let's hope so. Let's hope so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any questions for Chief Brody? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, we talked about additional equipment replacement, but we did not talk about the grant administrator position for grant writing. That would be proposing an additional FTE to go out and look for grants for the public works department, those infrastructure grants and things like that.
There's gonna be a lot of grants available, which we're aware of. And generally speaking, you need someone who has expertise in an area. Just hiring a grant writer as a person for the city doesn't help us get the grants we need per area, and I think the infrastructure area is the one area where we know there is a huge need and opportunity for getting some of those grants. So I think, my opinion, certainly Council needs to voice theirs, is we need a grant writer to secure these. I don't think our staff, day in and day out, can add that to their role and responsibility. They're gonna have to help anyway, but I don't know that they can write the grant themselves, so.
They will pay for themselves. A grant writer will pay for themselves.
It's not just the grant writing, it's also the administering of the grant, and that's where a lot of the work actually comes into it, so, yeah.
I would, I would agree that the position is needed, yes.
Full support. Okay, I see a lot of nodding heads. All right.
Next for consideration is the Chadburn Streetscape Maintenance. This would be approximately $52,000 a year to cover the cost of an employee and some, and some minor equipment, I guess, and then a one-time upfront cost of about $35,000 for a truck. This position would be added to the Parks Department and would maintain Chadburn Street from the river to 19th Street to, and, you know, keep up the improvement, the improvements that we've made there. This was originally introduced to the tiers board as a request by John James. My understanding is that they denied that request, but we're still bringing it to you for consideration as far as whether you want that position added to this year's budget.
Well, the tiers, tiers has the capability of paying for this. That's part of the tiers languages, that tiers can pay for cleanup, trash, maintenance, land watering, et cetera, so I'm not sure why we would want to add something else here when the tiers fund can pay for it.
John, do you want to speak to that, what they kind of decided and?
Yeah, and I guess I just wanted to clarify. John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. I wouldn't characterize it as the board denying it so much as they tabled it for further discussion, so they wanted to research it more. There were some questions about how much would come from the north and south funds, and so we need to do some calculations there. So they did plan to take it up at an upcoming meeting, but I would say they were, some of them were skeptical as well, so.
It is part of the tiers language, and I think before we agree to do this, it needs to go back to the tiers board. It, tiers funds can be used for that, there's money to do that. And I strongly recommend that we revisit that conversation. Harry?
I had a brief conversation yesterday when I visited with Daniel on this. I think it's something that we can take a look at in the future, but I do not see that as being needed today. We're not even through with phase one, and we haven't even started the north Chadburn. So whether we look at this again next year or the following year, but I can't see putting it in this particular budget. I just, I don't see any way that it's gonna benefit.
Let Shane speak to it, but right now Shane's crews and Parks are trying to take up the slack, and they don't have the people to do it, and so they're having, it's mainly trash-related, and there's no one to pick up that trash, and they're trying to get it done with not staffing to do it. So that's why it's being brought forward to the tiers board, is currently the group that's trying to pull it off is not staffed to handle it.
Well, what I know was done several years ago when Downtown San Angelo Inc. had the trash receptacles that people purchased and are out on the streets, they made an agreement with Public Services to pick up that trash, and so they do that. Now, those trash cans that they do are not the same trash cans that have just been added to the Chadburn Street project, and there are no trash cans at this point on the north side. I think we need to go back to tiers and relook at that. What we didn't do, we need to step back, Tina, on the considerations for public works requests. We all nodded our heads and said we believe this grant administrator position is important, but we didn't talk about the additional equipment replacement.
That was what Shane was talking about earlier, that's that same request?
I know it was, but we didn't have a discussion here amongst ourselves and whether the council wants to put in the budget the $458,000 that Shane says he needs to do his job. I think it needs to be budgeted. We have marginal revenue to do that. I don't know how, we need two things. We need great people and we need great equipment to get the job done.
And Tina, did you talk to the marginal revenues specifically about the sales tax in addition as far as the new calculations? So there's a portion, there's an amount that can come from that, correct, Tina?
And the remaining could come from a one-time source like the ARPA grant or from sales tax surplus as well.
Don't we need equipment replacement on an annual basis? Why are we looking for additional resources when we know equipment replacement is a part of getting the job done annually?
Sure, and if we added that $200,000 to their budget, it would be in their budget every year, and we could continue to build upon that.
I just think it's necessary. I don't know how you have a request for $458,000 worth of equipment replacement and we not address that issue.
Let me make sure I understand. Didn't you say we already budgeted a million and a half-
Yes.
-for equipment replacement?
Yes, and that's-
So this 400-plus thousand is a one-time request, or is it something that is ongoing?
That's a question for Shane.
It's definitely gonna be a component of that that deals with inflation. And again, talking about additional 200,000 from the sales tax actually covers that inflationary part of it. But as far as the remainder of it, is an increase of an additional 200,000, $300,000? Is that something that we need every year? Again, I know that right now we're having to address it because of the inflationary part of it, but Shane, let me go on.
I think we need to address it, and then I would say the following, because we do this on an annual basis. His needs next year might not be so much, then we take it out of the budget. Just because it's put in the budget this year because of the need doesn't mean he gets to keep it forever and ever and ever. Just like other things that we negotiate.
Actually, once we put it in the budget, it is in the budget forever unless we take it away.
But we can ask it to be reduced in the budget. That's part of the process.
Yes, we can.
Just because it's there isn't for life. If he doesn't need that next year, Shane, you're gonna have to take a budget cut.
And again, we're, you know, we come every year with our hand out, you know, because again, we are behind in our, in our dealing, so, but we believe that basically this additional money, 1.5 and we had another 458, again, we fully believe that we need that long-term to maintain our replacement program, because our replacement program is not where it needs to be. But again, and we understand, and if there's marginal revenue of 200,000, we will gladly accept that as well, too. Anything helps, and so, but again, as we were looking at where we currently are, where we're, and what we're looking at in moving into the future, again, looking at the increases, gosh, just the past two years have been tremendous, but-
Trying to be really nice, I get it. You're trying to play this.
And I am, but again, but we do, we do come every year with our hand out, asking, and again, in every little-
Because you need it or you want it.
Because we need it. I mean, we are, we're behind, and we have been, and so, but again, we, again, we come up with creative ways to address these issues, and so, again, Ryan and his staff are really great at coming up with those type of things, cost-saving measures, being able to extend life of vehicles and equipment, and so we've done a really great job moving forward. But again, we are behind, and again, we're just asking like we do every year, you know, please help, so.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it answers my question, but I guess as a comment, you asked for comments. I guess my comment would be, if we have, it sounds like 200,000 potentially of marginal revenue, use that, and then I would be in favor of a one-time source this year until we hear from Daniel on the employee side. So that, you know, I would be in favor of that approach this year.
I think the 458 is necessary. We've got 200 here, and again, this isn't to not address employee needs. But if you have employees who don't have the right equipment to get the job done, it impacts their morale and what we ask them to do. So one isn't about taking away from somebody else or something else. It is about addressing the needs, period. Okay, any other questions, comments, input? Okay.
Our next consideration is a health insurance benefits administrator. I'll let Brian kind of speak to the need for that, but he does have it within his budget. He would be eliminating a software product and replacing it with an FTE.
So you might remember, three years ago-
You would talk very slowly.
I'm sorry.
And Tommy, you'll be back shortly.
Okay. So as you might remember, three years ago, we came to you with what we were doing. We were facing the need of either adding an FTE or trying to find some innovative way to do the job without adding an FTE. And of course, our desire is never to grow government, and so we tried to look through a resource that would do that without growing FTE. Over the last three years, we've limped through with that software, but it did not create the efficiencies that we need.
Which is amazing, because almost always people do software to reduce the need for-
So there's a couple of things. We have a complicated retiree system compared to what these software, the people who offer these software programs are used to seeing. So we have a tiered approach to our retirees, and then, you know, there's just some complications in the way that we administer benefits to our retirees particularly. But then, that's also exacerbated by the, the way it communicates with our financial system, a central square. And so they don't communicate well, and so we're going back behind it and catching errors. And essentially, what we do is we keep a, Christine, our HR manager, has not been able to be an HR manager. She's been a health benefits administrator for the most part, and she's keeping, she's keeping a spreadsheet that has more colors on it than the rainbow of how she's tracking all these things behind the scenes to make sure that, you know, one thing we never want is somebody's benefits messed up when they need to go in and get something done. And so, our desire to you now is, instead of using that money for software that's diminished returns at best, to go ahead and use that to create the FTE that, you know, and maybe that's my fault, three years ago, when I thought we could find some efficiency, so I'll take that. But we needed the FTE three years ago, and now we have an opportunity, since that three-year contract is over with PlanSource, that we could, we could fund that position, and then we could get some bandwidth back within our department, especially as we're trying to recruit, as much as we're trying to recruit right now.
Is some of that extra workload because of the increase in the casualty?
No, this is solely in the health insurance fund. You know, as you, as we all know, federal government has more and more requirements of how we report things and, you know, making sure folks that come in are educated about how they can change benefits mid-year. You know, there are certain life events that allow you to do that under IRS and other ones, you know, won't, and people don't understand those differences, so there's a lot, there's a customer service component to what we do, making sure retirees and current city employees understand those things, because they don't deal in those areas on a regular basis, and we need people who can speak to that, be available. And again, we thought the software, because it was, it was kind of like, it was presented to us, that it would be sort of like going on Amazon, you click what you need, and you go to your checkout, and you, you have your new. It did not work out that way. And so, we need, we need somebody to manage that process, and we believe, we believe we can do it cheaper than the software, and we'll employ somebody in San Angelo, and I know this is not necessarily-
What's your cost savings, then?
I believe our projected cost on software would have been 75 this year, and I think we were at 60.
$675,000?
No, $75,000.
Okay, I was gonna say, wow.
$75,000, and I think-
The cost of the FTE with benefits would be 65.
Yeah, so approximately $10,000 savings, and it'll be better. It'll be better than what we currently have.
Questions? Yes, Tommy?
Ryan, this is maybe a silly question, never stopped me before.
Today's your day.
Yeah, thank you. I see the, the, Etna up there, our insurance carrier. If I'm not mistaken, in the, in the first years of that contract with Etna, the first year or two, and it may have been a one-time thing with them, they had money that they would make available. And that's my question, for, was it a specific thing or things, if I'm even thinking correctly? Am I, am I even in the right ballpark?
Yeah, it could not be used in this particular thing, but we do make use of that. It's kind of a, it's something that doesn't have to come out of our expenditures, but we can partner with Etna to do some of those things.
Okay, but it would not help you here?
Not, not with this.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, okay. All right. That was my question. Thanks.
I think it would be hard not to support pretty much a net wash, software for human being. I think I like the human being better. Yeah. So other questions, comments on that? I think if there's support. Go ahead, Larry.
Are you going to require some overlap if you get this administrative position with the, the existing computer?
With the software? No. We have already canceled the software because we couldn't move forward with it. I mean, it creates additional work which has really, really cut into our, our ability to handle our, our department.
Very okay. All right. Thank you. 11:49.
We have one last consideration, if you want to go through that, or were you going to break? Okay. The, the last consideration we have is for health insurance. You heard about this at the last meeting. If we share the costs with the employees, the increase to the general fund would be $99,000 versus if the city picks up the full increase of $124,000 to the general fund. We are proposing to cover the full cost for that nominal amount of a difference of $25,000. And so, that concludes our considerations that we have for you today. The next part of our slides will go into Brian kind of speaking to our employee issues and vacancies and things like that.
Yes, Gary?
I have one question. And it goes back to the first few slides you have. As we all realize, there's this serious imbalance on property tax revenue. What are we going to do about that?
Imbalance, I'm-
Well, you've got commercial paying 14% and residential 71%.
Oh, I see. Yeah. The what? Go ahead, Daniel.
That's something really, I know the mayor's been harping about this since she got here. It really goes back to economic development and building, building that tax base for commercial. As long as that commercial tax base stays that low, you'll see the taxpayers, as far as the residential taxpayers, continue to pay at a higher rate. As, as we bring in more commercial accounts, it will actually assist with that. So that's the, the goal right now, is to work that economic development as strongly as we can to get those businesses in here. But really what it comes down to is we, we need more businesses in our community.
It's one of the big things that we'll be strategizing and really looking at as we go forward because we talk a lot about economic development, but the big impact to our community has really been property tax dollars. And it's really been residential. In the county, it's different because they've gotten a lot of solar farms, which has brought in a tremendous amount of additional property tax dollars. But we don't benefit from the wind towers and the solar farms. So really, the impact on our world has been truly residential. There's been some commercial, but residential, if you take a look at those apartment complexes, they've had a tremendous amount of property tax dollars, to which keeps it up at the 71% because where we see the big development is residential apartment complexes.
If I may add, Mayor, it'll be probably a little bit easier in the future. Once, of course, we talk about the interstate system. It's going to take a while to get them here. But once the interstate system is here in the future, that's definitely going to assist with helping build up that commercial. But right now, it's just a matter of working those accounts and working on what we have at this point.
The same thing with the rail park.
Yeah.
It will bring in those additional commercial industrial taxes. Two things. One, obviously is waiting for the bridge and the custom border patrol to get their act together and get that opened up for us. But there are projects in the works in terms of looking at that rail park. And there is a commitment, I think it's in five years, I can't remember, so don't quote me on this, but that, that rail park will be brought into the city limits, which is not, it's in the county right now. And there is a commitment to bringing that whole rail park into the city's property tax base, annexing it. So that'll be a big one. It'll, it'll help. But it's still, it's going to take a lot to reduce the 71%.
Mayor, before we break, can I ask you a question? We have gentleman from, or Greg from MHMR who was wanting to see if we could up his, the money that we give him. Is this the proper time to address that or is it till after?
I don't know. It's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
We can, I mean, I can visit with, I mean, we can definitely sit down and talk about that, but it's not a part of the discussion we're offering. No, it's not.
I just didn't want him to have to stay all this time and then not even let him-
It's not an agenda item, so.
I'll talk to you in just a little bit, okay?
Thank you.
All right. We are going to adjourn for lunch. It's 11:53. We'll try to get back about 12:30. Okay?
Go thaw out. It is cold.
9:00, 8:00 PM. And the budget workshop will be called back to order. And we will start with the city council brief history overview of HR.
Yes, thank you. So just this first slide, we have it up. All right. I'm bad with technology. Okay, so a brief history, just to make sure we all know the history because I know, you know, we've had a couple of changes on the seat probably since the last time we had the discussion. In August of 2007, we awarded a bid to have public sector personnel consultants look at our classification compensation plan. In March of 2008, it was what they had, the work they had done was implemented. Since that time, it's been 14 years, a little over 14 years. We've modified those grade ranges a total of 11.9%. And I would add that, you know, through the work that y'all, this council did last year, 3% of that was last year. We moved from 8.9% to 11.9% over those 14 years. So we did make some progress there. And we went from an average of moving those ranges from 0.66 to 0.85. So I mean, it's, it's progress. We want to, we want to move those ranges. The next slide, unless anybody has questions on that. Okay. Just want to talk a little bit about the situational considerations. As of, this slide was prepared before the inflation numbers hit yesterday. And in June, we had hit an inflation high of 40 years. It did come down yesterday when they reported July. But, you know, it's kind of funny, you know, you, you look at buying power and I did, after I got that number yesterday, I went on to the CPI adjustment and looked. If you had 100, if you had to buy a $100 product in June, what does that cost to buy today? And, you know, after they got the July numbers in, it was $99.99. So we got a penny more buying power out of every 100 with that inflationary downturn. So-
Well, it is, but let's be clear.
But it is, it is moving in that direction.
The 9.1 is also a one or two-month number. And yesterday's was a one-month number. So yes, it's relevant, but it is not apples to apples, et cetera.
Right, right. I'm merely pointing out that in, you know, it didn't change that much in the month. So even though that slide's a little bit old, it does kind of still tell us the, the situation over the last 12 months. Over the 14 years since the plan was implemented, inflation has totaled 38.77. I believe I recalculated that and I believe it was 38.75 now. So it still averages out to be about 2.77% per year. And that's, again, just some situational things for y'all to be aware of, and I'm sure you are. Vacancies is the next, the next real consideration. And I have a slide here that shows you typically, and I was asked for this slide from Councilmember Miller as we were discussing vacancies over time, because any of you know that spoke to me, at least since spring, I've been pounding this drum for a while, that vacancies are becoming a real concern. So historically, we would, we would plan to see somewhere in the 2% to somewhere in the 4% range. If it was going really bad, we might get into the 5% for a little while. But typically, that's where we would see the vacancies. Of course, we implemented the hiring freeze and I stand by Daniel's decision to approve that. And I stand by my recommendation to do that. We were trying to be fiscally responsible. We didn't know what the pandemic would, nobody knew what that would bring. And so, if I made a mistake, I'll own that by recommending that we should hire, that we should have a hiring freeze. But, you know, I think it was the right thing to do at the time. And if I had the same information, I would probably make the same recommendation today. But with that being said, when we came out of that, we were at 11%. And you can see that we, we took a little bit of a downturn. We started, we started being able to recover a little bit. I think we got down in the eights, a little bit under 9%. But then we seen a steady increase ever since then. And it's, I mean, it's, it's a huge problem when you combine that with these other considerations that I'll, I'll speak to on the next slides, unless somebody has a question about vacancies.
Well, when you, when, go back to that earlier, earlier slide when you were talking about a couple of things, the one before, maybe the one before, let me see. Yep. Because I think in, you looked, you talked about the average increase of what was, a total of 11.9% increase. But I believe in 2014, if I'm not mistaken, there were cash bonuses given instead of raises.
Right. I'm simply talking about what we've done with the ranges because, you know, one of our biggest, my biggest story to tell you guys, what I think is the main story to tell you guys, is the, the problem that we're having to attract and recruit.
Correct.
And so, those ranges are one of the primary things that you do to, to, to recruit and attract.
I do want to point out that those bonuses or stipends that were given back then, it was only effective, of course, for that one year. So we would have to adjust maybe, maybe like the, with the presentation by one year. But it's still everything else.
But just to give credit for credit due.
Sure.
You did that.
Yes, we did.
Which was a good thing to do. Not debating it.
Right. Does anyone have a question on the vacancy situation as we see it? We're, we're 18%.
The question mark I have is because as we were talking earlier on the percentages and taking a look at the positions open by definition of each of the individual positions, the two biggest ones that, that are seasonal and yet they make up part of this total is the 27 positions that are open in civic events and the 16 positions that are open as lifeguards. So those are calculated into your total, but legitimately through August, they kind of disappear, no, the civic events does not change as much. But those lifeguards have, as a, as a part of that 18% would disappear as a need come September.
That's a great point, Mayor. And, and that's, that's in my vacancy calculation. I make sure to make account for that. So those, 27 positions for civic events or-
I'm not quite sure what all those are because it was just listed as civic events assistant, civic events, 27 positions. I'm not sure what those are.
Extra help for civic events. That's what it's, the, the way we advertise it is civic events, extra help. But it's really just assistance to make sure that they can pull off the events that they need to pull off. And so, if you, if you look at those as seasonal, particularly lifeguard, since you, since you mentioned that, and, you know, they go away once the poll season is over.
Yeah, because you have a summer camp coordinator, one position, well, summer's about over, summer camp counselor, recreation four positions, summer's about over. So-
And it's a great-
Needed them. They were needed. We didn't have them. We couldn't hire them.
And it's a great point to make for, for public clarification. The way that that's calculated into the vacancy calculation is if you take those, those 16 lifeguard positions, the way I would calculate that is essentially five and a third positions because we anticipate we'll have those for about four months. And so, I don't calculate them as a full, so that they don't impact that percentage as much. So if-
They impact the, because-
They do impact the total.
Twenty-seven positions, you listed as seven, 16 positions. It's listed as four positions and-
Right. So, so the way it would break down for everyone's information is the full-time employees, non-civil service is 16.01% of that 18%. And that's, that's full-time FTEs, non-civil service. We have an additional, you know, part-time positions at 30 hours. And so, we calculate those at 0.75 because they're, you know, permanent positions and they work about 75, they work 75% of the, of the full-time schedule. And they, they are 50% vacant. But there's only nine positions, so it doesn't, you know, it doesn't impact that overall. The biggest driver on that is the full-time 101 positions. Then we have part-timers at 20 hours. That's actually completely full, knock on wood. Hopefully, it's still full by the end of this discussion.
Are those positions hard to hire because they are only 20 hours? Because a lot of people need more than 20 hours. So the question mark is, are we having difficulty filling those positions because it is only 20 hours?
No, we actually have zero vacancy. There's only three positions that are 20 hours. It's zero vacancies. I believe most of them are-
Sounds like we need more 20-hour positions.
They're, most of them are long-term people in those positions. And typically, what we'll see from, you know, on 20-hour employees are somebody that's retired and they just want something to do for part of the week. And so, they'll come back and do something like that, just, just to have something into their schedule.
Because you've said that, let's talk about that. So we have a lot of these open positions. We have people who have retired. Is there any way that we can help support our staff with some more part-time people in some of these positions that are having a hard time filling by going back to our retirees who are already trained and already know the job?
We could certainly look at that. I know, I know-
It might not be ideal, but it's a body when you need a body.
Well, and even some of the people that we've lost, I know Officer Bellini is, is reaching out to some dispatchers that have moved on to try to fill that void. So we, we are as creative as we can be in trying to, you know, trying to solve these, these issues, especially as large of an issue as having essentially an 18% vacancy. And I just wanted to be clear, since we brought that up, that 16% of that is full-time. Some of that is part-time, but it's a much smaller amount. The temporary seasonal, again, they're counted at a third of a position. So it's, it's not impacting that overall. Even though there's a lot of positions seasonally, they're not impacting that overall vacancy calculation because I want to make sure I'm giving y'all a number that makes sense.
Lucy?
Brian, when you say 16%, what is the number exactly?
We've got 101 FTEs open currently, or vacant currently. And that's out of 623, 632, 632 positions. 631, sorry. I was off by one.
And again, I just asked the question. We, we advertise them, we promote that they're full-time positions. At what point have we looked at it and said we might have a broader range of people looking for it, but they don't want full-time position?
We do have those internal discussions. Do you think that maybe splitting this out and having two part-time positions would make sense? Most of the feedback we get is that they don't believe, you know, in some of these positions like HEO with, for instance-
What's that?
That's one of the, I'm sorry, heavy equipment operator. That's one of the positions is within the full-time group. That's, that's more of them open. I think we have a total of nine HEOs right now open. You couldn't split those into, into two part-timers because you're trying to get somebody that has a CDL that's willing to, and like I said, we'll, we'll have those discussions where we can. And, and we do have those discussions. Actually, Veronica and I have done that with animal services. And we have, we have done that with animal services. And we've seen some success there. But it doesn't translate as well into every position as you, as you might know.
And I think a lot have experimented with that over the years. For instance, in parks, we tried it. It did not work. We could not fill the part-time jobs at all. So we had to do the full-time. In nursing, sometimes with Sandra on COVID things, they've been able to find part-time that work better in that department. So it kind of depends on the department.
Yeah, it just depends on how it translates.
It does. And I'm just saying, what we might have tried to do 10 years ago or five years ago, we didn't have employee shortages like we do, not only just in the city, but the city, for all businesses. We've never had, as a country, as much need for workers. So it's not just the city of San Angelo, it's the country as a whole. So whatever we might have tried before and didn't work, might not be relevant to today.
When we do have those discussions on, we are, we are trying to be up to the task of, of meeting this need. The task is extraordinary. But we are trying to be, meet that need as best as we can, as creatively as we can. Any other questions about the vacancy percentage? So some compounding issues on top of the- So some compounding issues on top of the, the vacancy percentage that I just want to paint the real picture so that y'all see what we're up against. Our struggle on the civil service side, because I haven't really talked about that because we, we are largely full in positions there. It's not yet translated to a vacancy percentage, but overall applications and interest in becoming a first responder has been on a downward trend for quite a while. 10 years ago, for example, we would hold one entry test for PD at the beginning of the year, one entry test for fire at the beginning of the year, and through that process, you know, we'd have people that passed all the things ready for the background investigation or whatever. We would, we would end that year, and some of those names would expire because they're good for, you know, to the end of the year. Now, we have to have multiple exams every year just to try to keep, keep up.
That would make sense. I mean, that doesn't surprise me.
Which puts, which puts more work on, you know, staff to do those, to go through those exams, to go through the background. It's just, it makes it a longer process throughout the year where you used to have just one busy time at the beginning of the year, and it just shows how many people are also interested. Because again, we used to end the year with multiple names that would expire. Now, we barely drum up the, the folks that we need. And I can give some statistics on that. 10 years ago, we had one entry exam in 2012 for, for PD. 72 signed up to take the test, 13 were pre-exam disqualified. Of the 59 that tested, 44 applicants passed, and 31 of them scored higher than 80%. And the average score was 84.43. Now that's before any back, you know, they go through the background, they go through the oral boards, and anybody might get disqualified during that. Our most recent exam comparatively, we had 41 sign up for the test, so it's almost dropped in half. Eight were pre-exam disqualified because we're not getting the, as many qualified candidates as we used to. Of the 33 that tested, 18 passed. So a, at every level, we're losing more and more folks. 11 scored higher than 80% and the average score had dropped 3%.
I think comparing it to 10 years ago is probably not relevant, but.
And I'm, I'm just trying to tell the, the long-term decline that we've seen there. And so though, though there's not a vacancy issue right now, I want to make sure everyone's aware that I believe we will eventually be facing some vacancy issues there. And just to go through real quick, the, on the fire side, just to be fair, 2012, we had 157 sign up for the test, 45.
Do we have slides on this?
I, I just calculated these numbers just to be able to talk through it, I'm sorry. We had 157 sign up to take the test, 112 tested, 73 passed, 46 scored higher than 80, and the average score was 84.33. In our most recent exam for fire this year, we had dropped from that 157, we used to have a lot more people interested, to 50 signing up to take the test. 18 were disqualified pre-exam, 32 tested, 29 passed, 22 scored higher than 80% and the average score was 83.93%. So we can just see, you know, over time that we've had a lot less interest, and if, as we have more and more folks eligible to retire, we're likely to have some issues there moving forward. And that kind of brings me to the next point, the retirement eligibility for the entire organization. And this is something I've reported to Daniel since, since my first year as your HR Director, and I've seen it kind of grow over time. And this is the first year that I've went to Daniel and kind of went wide-eyed and go, within the next three years, we could have 30% of our folks retire. 22% are eligible today. And it's just a concern that we need to be, we need to be aware of, we need to be lucid about because it's on the horizon out there. I'm not saying they're going to retire today. Hopefully, hopefully we can talk them into staying as long as we possibly can, but it is something that's kind of looming on the horizon that I want to make sure y'all are all aware of.
How does that compare to state of Texas?
I do not have that number.
In other words, are we in the norm, are we out of the norm?
I am sure we are, I'm sure we are, we're pretty normal compared to other folks. I will say, our vacancies are higher than the cities that I've seen percentage-wise. But I'm not sure that all of them went through a hiring freeze, you know? I mean, it's kind of, it's hard to compare, you know, those kind of things because some people, I mean, again, if we, if, if we broaden out the numbers, then the statistics can get skewed because the workforce is so low, you know, based on a city of 25,000. So how do we compare? You know, it's very difficult to make a one-for-one comparison. But again, I, I think I've heard direction, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, I think I've heard direction from council that, you know, we're not Midland, and so I'm, this year I'm really.
Or Odessa.
Or Odessa, and I'm just trying to paint the picture of San Angelo here.
That's a good thing.
And so we have, we have 18%.
Sometimes it's nice to know, are we better than, worse than the state?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
And you've looked at other cities you're seeing, so you, it's relevant, and you're trying to talk to a relevant comparison.
Sure, absolutely, yeah. I, I wouldn't say our position is completely unique, no.
That's all I'm saying. Which makes, makes it a bigger issue.
Which makes it, yes, that makes the, the challenge even greater, because if everybody else was, was stocked up, we might be able to recruit a little easier. So with, with that being said, next point that I'd like to make is, is morale. I see it. I see it when I talk to folks, I've heard it in their voices. I, I believe that morale could exacerbate that, all, all of these situations.
Everybody got worn out over COVID, and I think our first responders, a lot of the gentlemen sitting here today.
Absolutely.
Were tested at all levels. I mean, I hate to talk about COVID, but I think there's some first responders who.
Absolutely.
Had extra burdens.
And so what we see is, now that we're, you know, again, 18% vacant, use that number, 81% of folks are doing, are trying to do, not can't, they can't do it, it's impossible. 81% of the people are, or 81 and a half percent of the people are trying to do 100% of the job. And so what they're doing, what we're seeing, is they're working harder and harder, but they're falling further and further behind in their duties. I mean, that's the reason, you know, we can't keep up with potholes, we can't.
It's also the reason why I talk about making sure we have the equipment they need, because if there's a morale issue, morale can be about, the equipment's busted, couldn't work, it delayed me, it, you know, so.
What I hear.
You know, those are the things that you worry that we haven't addressed either, and we need to make sure our staff have what they need to do the job.
Absolutely. I think that's a good point. What I hear more when I talk to managers is the fact that they're trying to do so much with so little staff. I mean, it's really, it's essentially four people trying to do five people's jobs, and you just, you fall further and further behind, yet you're working harder and harder, and you just feel maybe a little less satisfaction in what, in, or, you know, accomplishment. Like you don't see things come to their completion because you're falling further and further behind, and, and I think we all know.
And where's that the most prevalent?
Um, I think that's, that's pretty much throughout. We see that throughout. I mean, I would, you know, we could call up, we could call up directors and have them speak to it, but I see that pretty much throughout. Everybody that I talk to is, there, there's that part of the discussion, that they're trying to do more with less, and, and it's just, it's getting to a point of burnout, we've got to address these things. That's, I believe, all, all that I have, unless y'all have some more questions about retirement, the vacancy percentage, how our challenges in first responder recruiting, because that's, I'm telling you, right now, I feel like I've got to have, that's my obligation to you guys, to paint the picture as I see it for the next several years, and we're going to have some issues there if, you know, if things don't change, which hopefully they will. I'm an, I'm sort of an optimist, but.
We can't.
It winds up.
As a board, create an enthusiasm for the job.
Sure, sure. No, I think that's, that's true. And I would say, you know, even in, you know, if I could speak just personally, I'm third-generation public servant. My grandfather worked on the roads around Lubbock, and when he got off work, he volunteered in the Slaton Fire Department. And he raised his kids to all have that love of public service. And so my uncle was a, was a chief accountant for the city of McKinney, my dad was a water superintendent, my mother was a city clerk, my brother is a police officer, my cousin worked for the county, I mean, like, it's, it's throughout my whole life. And so I've always been raised with this idea of public servant, you know, we want to be public servants, we want to be good with our community, we want to help our community as best we can. I was actually the only one that didn't go that way. I went into retail management straight out of school and did that for a little over a decade before I came to, came back to that love of public service. And I just saw that I could make a change at the city of Dallas first, and then as soon as I got back to San Angelo, we, we made that effort here. And I say all that to say this, I don't see that as much as I used to. People used to aspire to public service. It is getting harder to recruit to public service.
Mayor, I do want to add, you mentioned enthusiasm for the job. This board, myself, we can actually assist with creating enthusiasm for the job, and that's by all of us showing that we do care about our employees, we do care about our staff, and we're going to do everything we possibly can to assist our staff.
That's the reason I keep bringing up the equipment.
Well, yes, ma'am, and we'll address equipment as well, but we didn't, we need to address pay, which is really important, okay? So I want to make sure that with all the comments made, we do understand about COVID, we understand about all the situations, those are the entities that are going to have to deal with that. We're going to have to deal with it ourselves here in the city. So I just want to make that point, that we all do have a responsibility to our staff, and we need to show that.
And I want to speak one more thing to that. Brian Groves has some great ideas for trying to promote that love of public service by spotlighting some of our folks that, that go above and beyond, and so he's started working on that. I believe the first one's filmed, or it's close to being finished. And so we're, we're trying to create enthusiasm for public service and make it something to aspire to, like I think it used to be, and it's just, it's, it's, it's lost out to social media influencers. I mean, like, that's ridiculous, but anyway, I won't go off on that diatribe.
I think your idea of using Brian Groves' office to highlight is important because not everybody goes to our city of San Angelo website and looks for job openings.
Yeah, and that's actually, it's actually Brian's idea, I can't take any credit for it. He came to us and we go, oh, that's a great idea, let's do that. So, so that's all his and Laura Lai's work.
You know, Shannon Hospital does that, and they highlight not only patients, but also doctors and their lives, and I think it brings a lot of, a lot to the table.
I do want to add that some of the best recruiters we could actually have is our own staff.
Yeah.
And our staff really loves what they're doing, they feel appreciated, then they'll reach out to others and say, hey, come work for the city, this is a great job. I mean, we, you know, we have a pretty good program here, so that's a big part of it, and we want to make sure that we, we do everything we can to, to support that staff.
I have some questions, Brenda.
Go ahead.
So Brian, if we're looking at this in a big picture, we're going to have people transition out, people transition in, people retire, you know, and go, how often do we get to bring somebody in less than the level the person exited?
That's a great, that's a great point.
In my industry and lots of them, you know, that person left, and now we're looking at trying to recruit that person. Very seldom do I see us being able to get somebody below where they left at.
That's, that's a great point, because, I mean, again, there's that, there's that love of the community that, that's, that's here, long-term, and, you know, folks leave, and trying to get somebody in that can, that can do that job, that maybe hasn't been in our community as long, or whatever the, or again, maybe didn't, wasn't, didn't grow up in that love of public service or aspire to that, that's a noble venture. It's.
I'm looking for some factual, I mean, have you been able to bring some people in, in any of your recruits, that can come in at a lower level than what has exited?
Very rarely, I would say, but Veronica can.
Is that because mostly we, people work their way up into those positions, so you'd be have, you'd have to hire from another city, that same level? Is that what you're asking? I mean, that's kind of part of it, is because a lot of our people have worked their way up from this position to this position to this position, so if this person retires, is this person available to go up? And then you start that step ladder.
Yeah, a huge part of, of any plan that we've, that we move forward with is succession planning, because you do get a hometown discount for, for growing people within your organization. They are kind of, again, they build a love for the organization, they build a love for the community, and, and there is, in fact, a hometown discount. If you have to go out and recruit that, I mean, you could talk about the city engineer position, that's been open now for almost two years. What we lost lands at, we don't have a hope of bringing somebody in at that salary level.
We have, are we working with the engineering department out at ASU? Because I know there's a lot of interns, and people are using some of those interns. Are we working with ASU to fill some of those jobs with the ASU people?
I believe Kevin and Shane might, could speak to that, but they do have an intern program where they're trying, trying to meet that need. And you just, you know, from, from my part, what I would say is, you know, we cost, we talk about the costs of things, and of course we should, but one of the things we rarely talk about is the cost of not filling a position. And my, my thoughts are on a city engineer, if we don't have that position when we engage in a $21 million Bell Street project, what did we lose? What could, that position could have caught? If they were, if the, if the engineering services was fully staffed, had a city engineer, what might they have caught that they didn't catch? And I'm, I'm not saying there is, but it's, it's impossible.
That's a whatever.
It's, it's impossible to put a number on, but what I would expect is, a city engineer worth their salt is going to save more than their salary in the projects that they, that they oversee.
Because I look at it and say, we've got some great engineering students at ASU, some of them will be seniors, some are juniors, some could start working for us as they graduated because they've already worked their, their, some time here in the city of San Angelo. So, yes.
We're not competitive at the starting pay for engineers either, all the way through.
I'm talking interns, I'm talking, this, my conversation's about interns.
Interns cannot run a $30 million street reconstruction project. They're interns, they're brand new. We need an experienced engineer to be our city engineer.
Right, but if you can't hire them, and you're saying for two years you haven't been able to hire them, you've got to look at alternative approaches. And my point is, if, if, no, alternative approaches, working with ASU, with the people in their engineering department, it might help. I'm not saying it will, I'm just saying we've got an engineering department that are people looking to become engineers.
I think Shane's going to speak to their intern program.
Yes, ma'am, we, we do, we, we always have at least one intern and sometimes two interns, depending on, because there's a ton of competition for them out there as well, too, so, but we always have at least one intern. We just recently hired for an EIT project engineer, we just hired a recent graduate from ASU, so we do work with their program very closely, in both, even Allison as well, constantly engaging with them, so, yes, we, we work with them.
And I believe Daniel and I just approved to hire another intern, too, that Kevin had, yeah.
Yeah, they're not going to be a full, I mean, they're not going to come in experienced as engineers, but if we're having difficulty finding the graduates, if we can take people that are in our city, in our school, and get them attached to our city services, we might find some wonderful employees out of ASU, and that would be great.
Just real quick to add and answer Tom's question, I'm sorry, Veronica Sanchez, Assistant HR Director. I would say I approve all of the, the hires, and I would say probably less than 1% are hired below what the exiting person is making. So it's, it's very rare.
Well, and it's not just a problem, I mean, that's entire industry nationwide, and so everybody's making a move. I'm married to a teacher, it's the same thing they're dealing with. Certain departments here at our city are lined up structurally to protect themselves, which is a good thing, to protect who we are, of course, our hometown, the lateral part restricts, but it's just becoming a huge issue now. Can we, can we fill the holes? I see people that are just worn out, I get it, you know, and we have equipment to take care of, we've got people to take care of, and we need to take the gifts and opportunities laid out in front of us to try to mend those as fast as we can.
Yeah, and, and again, part of that is succession planning, talking about, you know, one of the things I'm a big advocate for is creating job families so that people can progress in their career, and again, they will be cheaper than recruiting outside, that's just, that's just a fact. The more that we can grow from within, the more, the better fiscally we're going to be.
There is a current cost today.
There is a current cost today of some of these vacant positions. Your city engineer is an excellent, there's no telling how much work we're having to send to the outside today.
We know we are.
Well, I mean, we know we are. So there is not only future.
What is the cost of a vacancy? I mean, it's again, I can't put a hard number on it, but we know, we know there's a cost of every one of these vacancies. And and some of it is just the burnout to everybody else.
There's a current cost today.
What other areas at ASU exist that we would be able to recruit from? Because it's such a sort, you know, between Howard College and ASU, there's such a bonus to this city. There the fact that we have them here in the city of San Angelo is fabulous.
We've utilized student interns with them, but we can certainly reach out to them and see what more we can do, for sure.
And that is recreation, where we've hired from ASU in the recreation department. So we've worked with them there.
We've done that in HR. We've done that in legal over time. So we definitely have a strong partnership with ASU, but we could, we're always willing to look and see what more we can do.
I mean, they have a career development staff and I would think we'd want to sit down with the career development staff at ASU and find out what we as a city could do better to hire those graduates. And because, you know, just because you've got a degree in education doesn't mean you're going to become a teacher.
That's an excellent point.
It could be another job that, you know.
I think that's an excellent job for me to assign to Christine when we can get her out of benefits. So it sounds like a good plan.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Oh, sorry, ma'am. We gave you the council direction right on budget and property tax levy ordinances. Did we do that?
No, this that comes back in September for the final formal adoption.
By September 8th, but are we going to talk about some of that so we're prepared to talk about it or not?
Yes, the whole, the purpose of this meeting today is to give us direction on what to bring back within that budget. So the next slide, we'll go through marginal revenue and and get your feedback on that.
Go for it.
As I stated earlier, we have marginal revenue in the amount of $4.3 million. We're proposing personnel salary increases and at 7%, setting aside market rate adjustments in the amount of $881,000. And that would be to address pay structure and lower level employees. We're proposing to cover the entire cost of the increase in health insurance at $124,000, leaving us an available revenue over expenditure budget of $186,000 that can be allocated as council sees fit. We're also proposing employee stipends utilizing the ARPA or American Rescue Plan Act. The cost of a $2,000 stipend would be just under $2.5 million. The cost of a $2,500 stipend would be almost $3.1 million. There is $8.1 million left in available funding from ARPA, which if you funded at the 2,500 level would leave $5 million left for other initiatives or projects.
I think we always kind of thought the American Rescue Plan would go towards infrastructure issues, but certainly it's up for discussion amongst council. And one of the reasons I, you know, we want to talk about that separately from raises and et cetera is we have this capital improvement plan that's got how many dollars in it?
Well, ma'am, I don't have the exact dollar amount as far as that, but.
I can't really seem to look it up, but it's hundreds of millions.
I don't have a total, so I just have the paperwork.
While you're looking at information up there by me, we've talked a lot about, as far as the presentation Brian just made a while ago, I do understand that that we can argue just about any point and say there's some issues that need to be considered in certain areas. You know, we did deal with COVID. We did do hiring freeze. We did a lot of different things in order for us to sustain during that time period. But I do know that going back years now, that we haven't put forth the the effort that we should have, and I can take blame for that, to address the needs for our employees. And so when you start looking at the pay for our employees and the level that they're coming in at, it's really difficult at this point to really hire for those positions. It's almost actually it's becoming almost impossible to hire for those positions, especially when you have you have companies here in this town, you have your HEBs, you have your Targets, your McDonald's and other places that actually pay more than what we can offer for people coming in. You know, Brian talked about service and it's hard to convince somebody to come in here and provide a service for a community to be a public servant when we're not showing them that we really appreciate them as a public servant. So one thing that I want to make sure that we're very aggressive about really, to be honest with you, it's not just this year and what we're requesting right now, but it's to develop a plan for the next five years to address employee pay for the next five years. I strongly support what's on the screen right now. And I do know, ma'am, that we have to take a look at other other items that we talked about a little while ago. But in this, what we're presenting right now, we really feel that this will bring us a little bit closer to what our needs are. The market rate adjustment, for example, will definitely allow us to address the lowest paid employees. It'll allow us to address any compression issues that we have. And this is significant for us. You know, if we're going to survive, we can't go above the numbers at this point. 18.38% vacancies is ridiculous. If we wait another six months and really don't do anything about it, when we start hitting the 24%, 25% point, at that point, we're talking about services shutting down. And I don't want to, I don't want to express a doom or gloom type of a situation, but right now, looking at 18.3% and we can say, you know what, a lot of the country is is hurting right now. You know, I understand that, but right now, what I'm concerned about is the city of San Angelo. And what can we do to address the needs that we have at this point? And right now, what we see on the screen is a good topic for us to discuss and start talking about other needs. Yes, we do need equipment. I do get that. And we could talk about how we can spread that money around to address that. But right now, this is a huge concern for us and it's something that just absolutely has to be addressed. And I do understand that council members, mayor, all of you sitting here, understand that. And it's just at what level are we going to kind of move forward and say, okay, this is what we need to do at this point to really get get us to right in the ship? So with that said, I know that y'all were looking for information. If you'll share that information as far as capital capital equipment.
548 million in the capital improvement plan.
Question, one of the things that comes up on a regular basis, and I think that one of those issues was addressed earlier, and it's something that Tommy brought up, and that's that Group 11.
Grade 11.
Grade 11 that we've eliminated. And I know that what, and I say this relative to the entry level, that $12.02 that we're paying, is that when you give across the board a 7%, what you do are those people who are making $150,000, that 7% really impacts them in a big way. If you give somebody a 7% increase and they're being paid $12 an hour, they don't see the benefit in that 7% the same as those that are in the higher salary ranges. And so my question mark is, is when we talk about this and you're talking about market rate adjustments, describe to me what this market rate adjustment is. Because the biggest issue is, are we or are we not really addressing the issues of the lower or the areas that Tommy referred to as tough jobs to fill because they're not competitive, if you will, with whoever you name? And so you're on.
Yes, so, you know, one, that's been our concern as well, to disproportionately affect where we can the the lower range. And we did that with the 11 to 12. And more is needed. You're absolutely right. The market rate adjustments, what I would recommend probably most of that money be used for is to to.
What made up this number? That's what I'm asking for. There's a number up there. It's called 881,998. How did we get to that number and what what composed that number? Because it's for us, it's just a number on a sheet of paper.
Okay, I think that was based off of, I had submitted a proposal for a change into a 1330 minimum wage, which makes us a little more competitive. Still not, we're still not out of competing with fast food restaurants at that level. But it would, it's certainly a huge, it's huge progress from where we were just 15 months ago. So I had submitted that. It was a, it was to get to 1330 and then have the grades be evened out with a, there's a 5% difference between the grades. And I believe that calculation came to 881,998. I didn't do the calculation, but I think.
Somebody did, so we need explanation.
And I left it, I left it for the experts in finance to give me a number. I just, I submitted a plan to them and I think that's where the 881,998 came from.
Kimberly did the math on that. She did the calculations based on the numbers given us by Brian.
Describe to us what that is, which is a number for us.
Mayor, let me, let me just address that a little bit. Okay, so he did talk about the, we already eliminated grade 11. What we would like to do is eliminate grade 12 and get it to a grade 13 as far as the starting pay. And some of those employees will be affected, even though we're doing a seven, we're talking about 7% increase, some of those employees that'll be moved up, not only get the increase, but they'll also benefit from the change at the lowest. So you'll have some employees that'll see like a 10 and a half percent increase at the lower level. So compression will become an issue, so we do have to make adjustments between the different grades. And this is all calculated into the market rate adjustment is to address the lowest level and address the those in between as far as the adjustments. We want to make sure that we're fair to everybody across the board. We want to, we don't want to create any problems with how we adjust the grade levels, the percentages between. But again, even with a 7% increase, to make that adjustment at the lowest level and also to to address a compression, again, some of those lower level employees, actually quite a few of them probably would be looking at a probably about a 10 and a half percent increase. We'd have to do work with the numbers on that, but they'll be benefiting at the lowest level as well.
But that's what we want to address. It's one of the things that Tommy brought up and I want to make sure in this conversation we're all having the same conversation. That's a number. You didn't tell us what we did with that number. What did it solve in terms of our ability to recruit and fill these jobs? Because we make it more market.
With with a 7% raise, our lowest rate right now at $12.02, that would get them to 12, I think 1285 or 1286. So it's not, still not even getting them to the 1330. So this additional amount will get us to where Brian says we need to be at the 1330. And that's a plan moving forward because we know that minimum wage will eventually be $15.
I don't know that 1330 is, but again, I'm well versed with municipal budget and the constraints that we all have. And so I would have said we need to get out of competing with McDonald's for positions. I realize the constraints that we all have. And so I'm just trying to make progress toward that so that we can recruit. Again, and we're going to, we're going to work on every level, exactly what we talked about, ma'am. We'll talk to ASU to try to solve some of the problems. We'll, we're going to promote public service, try to make public servant, being a public servant great again, I guess, and do those kind of things. But we think the 1330 is is going to make us more competitive to try to get folks that we can have maybe grow into long-term careers. And again, it's, that's the first, I think Diane Bays said, the first step to economic development is tourism or whatever.
Everything starts with a visit.
With everything starts with a visit, everything starts with getting them through the door. And so if we can recruit them, then maybe we can have succession planning and promote them within our organization. But we have, we have to get people in those in those lower positions and we do understand that's a challenge. And so it is dis, what what we have presented here is disproportionately affecting the lower end without without, you know, negating the needs that we have to be able to hire. We've got two directors open. It's only the second time I've seen two directors open since I've been with the city.
And I do want to address, ma'am, the 7%. You asked about that as well.
Well, my biggest issue is if everybody gets 7% and you make $150,000, you see a big bump. 7% if you're making $12 an hour, you don't feel it so much. And what we've talked about before is our ability at those lower levels to hire or the beginning levels, I don't want to call them lower levels because those jobs are hugely important to us, is are we addressing the needs at the beginning wage level? I think that's the best way to say it. Are we addressing it? It, that's all.
I am concerned about addressing it at all levels, definitely at the lowest level. But 7%, when you start looking at, for example, you talk about the higher pay employees, directors or what have you, they at this point, our directors and and yes, we do compare to sister cities, we compare to all of the cities, and even our our directors are underpaid when you compare to those cities. So when you talk about 7% increase, that's justifiable for those directors because even with that 7% increase, when you start doing a comparison with other cities, we still don't, we still don't, we're not even competitive with those. So when it comes to filling positions and we better hope that we can actually train employees from within and promote them because if we can't do that, we're not going to hire them from the outside, not for the pay that we're offering. So the 7% is is a huge impact for everyone across the 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 city, the different pay grades, you know. So again, I do understand that some people get paid more. That's part of the grade scale, that's part of the skill level, it's part of the education, it's part of all of that. That's why we have grade levels. But it doesn't mean that those individuals don't deserve it either. I mean, they have to get to a point where we have to be more competitive there.
You're exactly right. And talk to us about longevity because we, I was just one step, but I don't mean this to answer everybody's issues here, but longevity was created.
I was actually just about to bring that up. That's the, that's one of the steps we took last year to disproportionately affect lower end because that's a fixed dollar amount for how long you're here. And I'll tell you that what y'all did, what y'all proved, you saved at least six to eight positions that have talked to me and said, I was going to retire. Now I'm here for, you know, at least another year, two, three years. I even heard somebody that's going to add five years to their retirement plan because of that. And so that's, that's again, a huge component, especially at that lower end because those, you know, if you've been here 20 years and and you got that, that disproportionately affected the lower end and we needed that. I don't want to mention names because I just don't want to do that, but but I have spoke to many people and and heard back from directors. And then another thing I would say, the, when we adopted the budget last year, grade 11 was set at 1086. If we get it to 1330, which I do believe we can within this, that's 20%. It's not 7. So that's, we are making disproportionate movement at the bottom end. And so I think we are doing, I think we're all on the same page is what I'm saying.
Yeah, and we, you know, earlier that that conversation came up and there was by no means an attempt to say that given longevity pay solved the issues, but we hope it was a step forward. And that's all that comment was meant to be, period.
And it was a great step. And I, I can't tell y'all how much that means.
I think some people took it as all she want, that's that she thinks that was enough. We don't believe that was enough. I don't think anyone on this council believes it enough, but we also believe it was a beginning step to help. And Lucy has a question or comment.
Yeah, I just have a question. Ryan, cities are size. How much are they paying the lowest entry level people?
You know, every, a lot of city, a lot, again, public servant, we have benefited from have been able to get people into a life of public service and that being a thing. And now they're not. So there's a lot of cities struggling through these same things that we're struggling through, especially with the market forces. But we are seeing movement. We are seeing exactly what we're doing or or even more in some cases, of course, is is being done. I mean, that is, that is kind of a best practice right now, just trying, trying to bridge that gap. Again, not to, we cannot get, there's, at some point in there, there's a slippery slope in what I said. With the 22% currently eligible, another 8%, we we can't kick this can down the road. We've got to do something this year. And I, you know, that's, that's the reason the picture is so bleak that I'm painting, but it is the real picture.
Well, that's why I'm trying. Good lord.
Go ahead, have a voice.
Okay, now I'm trying to wake everybody out that is falling asleep. Now, what I really wanted to ask was, is if if we get up to at least $13, is that going to be enough compared to somebody that is our size of city paying their employees like? Like, like we said, well, go McDonald's.
We will still be behind other cities, but again, I, I'm just trying to paint, I, I go out, one of the things I've done this last year is go out and talk to managers of, of restaurants, because that's who we're competing for at that lower end. And, well, fa- fast, you know, fast food, fast food particularly are the ones that I've talked to, because you see their post-it, you see, you drive by Whataburger or McDonald's, and McDonald's is hiring up to $14 an hour to start.
But I ask him about that, and there's stipulations on it, but nonetheless, that's what he advertises.
And, and, and again, I've, I've spoken to some of the managers and, and asked them about their challenges, because again, we're kind of all vying for that same, you know, next year's professionals, really, because they're trying to, I mean, they've got a, they've got a crisis. They're trying to figure out who's going to be their restaurant managers in 10 years. They have a succession crisis as well. And so I've talked to them about some of their challenges and tried to learn what they're doing and, and, and try to see what, what I could possibly propose, or maybe what we can do to, to meet that need, because we're all vying for this, those professionals of next, the next generation of professionals. That's what we've got to find.
Yeah, well, like, not a long time ago, you know, we would talk to people and they would really go, the city is the place to work, you know, go and apply at the city.
The benefits and.
Yes, because of the benefits, because of this, you get, you know, to promote everything. That's what I would like in the future for it to be again, is, hey, get a job with the city. It's a great job to have.
Well, and, and, and there's, there is a sense. I mean, I'll tell you, I loved working in retail. I loved it. I loved the challenge of it. It was, it was, you know, I think any of you that's worked in that environment, it's a challenging environment, it is a cutthroat environment, and it was, it was very rewarding. But if I compare that honestly to what I do here, when I feel like I'm actually serving my community, at the end of the day, I feel this is a job well done. And I feel like, you know, I'm leaving a legacy that, 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 like I'm proud of my grandfather, and I'm proud of my father, that, that hopefully my kids will be proud of what I did here.
The other thing that we, as, as you looked at historic increases, and again, this is not to negate, is that many cities, we want to talk about many cities, have not covered 100% of healthcare increases over the past six years and, five years, and we have. And there's, you know, one of the biggest issues people have today is health insurance and medical costs.
Yeah.
This city council has been very good at, of supporting the employees with their health insurance.
Yes, and I, I've got a survey that I'm certainly willing to share with you all. I can get it in a Friday packet. It's about a year old, but it shows what other cities were doing with their medical insurance. And I think the thing that hurts us there is that we've made a commitment, you know, to retirees, which I'm glad we did. I don't want Russell Smith calling me. I go to church with him, and, and we want, we, we make no mistake about it, we want to keep that alive. And we're proud of the fact that we've done that for our retirees, but we are carrying that burden. That is a real legitimate burden. And so some cities that don't have that, their, their health insurance is a little more robust. And eventually, because we've made that change 20 years, 22 years ago now, eventually, I believe we will be able to even modify that benefit, because costs will eventually start to take a downturn on that liability that we have for that group. But with, with that being said, I'll restate it, because Russell, Russell will catch me in the foyer of church on Sunday morning. We do support retiree, that retiree insurance benefit, and it's a, it's a good benefit.
Okay, so, yes, Tom. Me, Tom, me.
Over the past two to two and a half months, I spent, I really don't know how many hours, but I'm going to guess it probably approached 30 to 35 hours, talking to, I believe, most of the directors and many of the managers that worked, worked with those directors. And Daniel, I will say to you that I fully support your recommendation. I support the 7%, the market rate adjustments, covering the health insurance. I personally support using the ARPA funds and giving a $2,500 stipend. Let me tell you why. We've got some, some folks sitting here in the audience that work hard every day. We've got somebody that's at work as we speak that works hard every day. They are doing more than their jobs. I can run down a list, y'all probably don't want me to, but I can run down a list of people that are doing the job of a city engineer, because we don't have a city engineer. I can tell you about people in this city that get their 40 hours before Wednesday at noon, because they don't have enough employees. I can tell you about people that cannot buy a tank of gas because they don't make enough money, and they have to go ask for overtime to get enough money to buy gas to get to work. So I can go on, I can go on. Folks, I fully support your recommendation, Daniel. 7%, the market rate adjustment, covering the health insurance, and I support the $2,500 stipend.
I would just like to speak and say.
Harry and then Karen.
Perfect.
You've heard me say this over the last six years since I've been up here. I fully support pay increases across the board for every city employee. In my early years as a councilperson, we talked about the fire department, and we talked about the police department in making those rate adjustments. And I've always said, we need to take care of those people in that ditch on Christmas Eve in 20-degree weather fixing those pipes. Those people that are making sure that we've got quality water to drink, those people that are repairing those sewer lines, everybody in this that works for the city, we need to be taking care of them. So I'm going to reiterate what Tommy just said and say that I support the 7%, the market rate adjustments, city paying for the health insurance, and the stipend of $2,500.
Tom, you're rolling, I mean, you're looking out and, okay. All right, but Karen, I said you were on next.
No speech necessary. Two great speeches already. I stand with Harry and Tommy.
I'd like to talk a little bit about the 7% across the board. Now, you can tweak that a little bit so that the lower level gets a little bit more in terms of it. But I believe that, it's the old saying, a rising tide raises all boats. We work in a pyramid structure. There's a heck of a lot more people on the bottom than there are at the top. So I'm not concerned about the so-called fat cat at the top making a little bit more when everyone in the system is benefiting from it.
That's, that's a very true.
The $881,000, that's the purpose of that amount, is to make sure those lower, lower levels are addressed.
This plan disproportionately affects the low end.
I think our question, and the reason he brings it up, is we just see a number, and I've brought it up several times, we just see a number here. What we don't see is the pyramid that Larry's talking about. What, how, what percent of those employees make up this market rate adjustment of 881? Is it 50%? Is it 30%? Is it 100 employees? Is it 20? I mean, what, it's just a number on a screen right now. We, and I keep saying we need the details. What does this do for us? And there's various comments about it, but we don't know.
I would say it's going to affect.
And we're not saying it's a wrong number, but we want to understand what it is.
Sure. I would anticipate that that, what I submitted to finance and where they got that number, I would submit that that's going to affect 99 of our 101 openings of our vacancies as we.
So in other words, it's all the way up from the top of the pyramid all the way down?
No, no. The two that I left out were directors. They're, they're on the high end. Most of, most of the ones that we have vacant are, are not on the high end.
It's not about the vacancies, about, because part of that 881,998 is not vacancies, it's employees.
Sure, but it, it.
It raises the rate at which we can post those vacancies, which is better for recruitment and retention.
It is for that purpose. What we're asking for are those people who are already employed by us.
Right. And I was, I was kind of getting there. So if you take those 99, that we know that's.
Because the good news is, those people have stuck with us. They're working for us.
We know, we know that those 99 positions are more than 15% of our total workforce in non-civil service. And it's going to impact all of them and all of their, everybody else that is in those HEO, LEO, I'm sorry, light, light equipment officer, operator, maintenance workers, office assistants, administrative assistants, all those, all those, all those ones that are in those first grades, if it's going to affect 99 vacancies, it's going to affect a lot of folks on that bottom end, believe me. We are all on the same page. The, the market rate adjustments are going to disproportionately affect the bottom end of our range, for sure.
Because we're talking vacancies, and my issue's employees. And hopefully we'll be able to recruit. But I also want to just make sure the people who've had to work those extra hours and those times and the whatever feel like we're not talking about people who don't exist within our organization, that we're trying to say, you have, who've put in the hours, who've stuck with us, who, and of course, they get longevity pay, but, you know, we just want to make sure that it's not about the vacancies only, it's about existing employees.
Mayor.
Okay, so those, those bottom three grades, sorry, the bottom three grades, the vacancy, most of the vacancies are in those bottom three grades. So that, that was my point in bringing up the vacancies. And filling those vacancies is important to those folks too, believe me, because they are all carrying a heavy load in addition. So we're going to disproportionately affect them, we're going to be able to recruit better, and that's going to affect them as well. And that was, that was kind of where I was, I was trying to paint a full picture by starting with the vacancies.
We want to say thank you to the ones who've hung out and worked and did overtime, and Tommy said 40 hours by Wednesday, whatever the story he's telling. They're people who have believed enough in the city to hang with us.
Absolutely.
And, and, boy, we're thankful.
Yes, yes, we are. And we're all on the same page there.
I have some information for you on your question earlier. This, this plan that Brian has proposed will impact 221 current employees. 155 of those employees currently make less than $40,000. Oh, I'm sorry, 182 of those make less than $40,000.
Will impact 221.
Yes, ma'am.
90% of people that make, are people that make under $40,000, so.
What we want to.
The other thing, I'm sorry. The other thing that we thought about proposing, if council does, direct us to employee stipends, is to hold off on paying those stipends till right before Christmas and right before summer, so that, that also aids with retention and holding on to those employees as well.
That's a good plan, great idea. Lucy, you keep raising your hand, I'm sorry.
I just had a quick, I just have a quick question. And that's just, do the employees, say for instance, the street and bridge, the water employees, the ones that we actually say they go out there in the cold, they go out there in the heat, do those employees get paid extra, not overtime, but extra during the hour, I mean, like instead of your regular pay grade hourly?
When it's in the middle of the night or something like that?
It would be over, I mean, it would typically be an overtime situation if you had a, a break zone.
But what if it's not overtime? That's what she's asking. The week starts on Monday morning and it freezes Monday night, so that's what she's asking.
Right. I mean, so those hours might, those hours would count to the overtime that they would have by Friday.
They get paid, they get paid straight time for the hours that they are working, and when they hit their 40 hours, regardless of when that is, they go to time and a half.
And so if you worked, if you worked four hours on Monday night, you know, digging a ditch.
See, that's my problem, is when they're going out at 2:00 in the morning, that's not the regular 8 to 5. That's why I'm saying, do, could you make it to where they would make a little more money during that time, because they, whether, because it's not going to be overtime.
So there, there are a couple of, a couple of things that I was kind of getting to. So if, if their schedule is Monday through Friday, say it's 8 to 5, they work Monday, Monday, 8 to 5, they get called in for four hours, they're still going to be there for the rest of the week, so those will translate into overtime hours. And in addition to that, in addition to that, there is on-call pay for those situations. So yes, they, they will get overtime, because then, I mean, unless they choose to leave early on, on Friday, which why would you if you already have built-in overtime just to work the rest of your schedule? Most people aren't going to do that. And then they also get on-call pay for coming in in the middle, if they, if they actually work and come in in the middle of the night.
And on-call pay is what I was getting at, because the overtime, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to get overtime and get up at 2:00 in the morning to go see about a ditch that's full of water I had to be at, no. I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am. We, we do account for that.
I have a question, I know the answer to already, but I think everybody needs to know this, and you probably know what it is. Is this sustainable?
Because if we don't have good sales tax increases next year, and we build up this new big base, what do we do next year? Then you do start, sorry, then you do start to have to cut in other areas to pay for the big base.
Right.
That we've created.
And we are budgeting sales tax very conservatively, at 5% less than what we expect to see as well. Property tax is certainly sustainable. We expect to continue to see increases at least the next two or three years, just because there's a cap on homestead exemptions. You cannot increase the value of your home, what you actually pay tax on more than 10% in a given year.
Lower the property taxes.
And so within the next two or three years, we'll continue to see 10% more on most of our residential homesteaded homes as well.
And if I may kind of flip that, since I think it's inherent in the question, 18% vacancies is not sustainable.
Okay, so, oh, yes, sorry. Whoever's on next, Tom.
Let me go to the market rate adjustments. We get rid of 11 and 12. Grade 11, 12, just goes to 13, and that also is the roll-up for everybody that was 11 or 12 to, into the 13. And it covers that.
And it goes all the way up to about, really about halfway through the grading levels.
So it's going to impact everybody on that lower end quite a bit, because, yeah.
All need to know.
That's what I keep asking. Yes.
I want to say to every employee sitting in this room, and that's nearly everybody, with the exception of people up here on the dais, and I want to say, there's probably some watching, and there'll be others that, that watch the YouTube later. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for what you do. You, you go to work every day, you show up every day, you work hard every day. We've been sitting here talking like, almost like y'all don't exist out there. You do. We see you, I see you, these people see you. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for working hard. Thank you for staying with us. Thank you for your perseverance. Thank you for your endurance. I say that to everyone in this room. Thank you.
Well, that's the reason I keep saying, we're not just talking about the vacancies, we're talking about the people who are here every day and have been here even when the vacancy. So we might not know your name, we might not see your face today, but that's the big part of this conversation that we're having right now. Tina, you were talking about the stipend and areas of, of options on that. Repeat that. I think it got lost in the conversation.
Are you referring back to what I mentioned about spacing it out and doing, okay, so I would propose to give two separate allotments, one the last pay period in November, right before Christmas, and one the last pay period in May, six months later, right before summer. And that also.
Meaning, just to clarify that, meaning if it was $2,500, you'd get $1,250?
Exactly. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, exactly. I think that also aids with retention as well.
Good idea. Good idea.
Supportive of that.
Well, I'm going to say that I support this marginal review revenue of doing 7% salaries. My biggest concern and question was what the market rate analysis was and making sure we all understood if it addressed the issues, because that has come up on multiple occasions. What are we doing for these lower level? And making sure that in this, that next year, we don't talk about that same thing again, which keeps coming up. And then the health insurance, and then I, I would support doing 2,500 with 1,250 and 1,250 split. And that's what I would recommend that we consider today.
I had one thing, Daniel, you said something in your presentation to us, and to me, it is as key as doing this, and that is the plan, that you come back, I don't know whether it's in 90 days, if it's in 120, I don't know when it. twenty, I don't know when it is. I would prefer before the end of this calendar year, but come back, you and Brian and, yeah, your other directors, appropriate directors, that we have a plan that we can work toward year over year so that we don't get to where we are now. So, that would be my preference as one council member.
It's important that we actually do that because we talk about sustainability, we start talking about, we do have to look at forecasts for the future and-
Affordability and budgets.
And affordability, so many different things we have to look at, but I do, I think that's a great idea, and that was something that, I'm glad you caught that because it's something that's important that we do that.
Yeah, please, please do that. Don't let that fall through.
But I also want to hit hard on the equipment's important here. I don't want to bring it up again, but we need to finance the equipment that our staff needs.
Yes, ma'am.
I recommend that we put that extra eight, $186,000 towards equipment replacement this year.
Well, we said-
And then we continue to build on it.
We said 458,000.
I think we put-
You just said eight hundred, I said 458.
Oh, 186 is what we have left. I would recommend that we put that towards equipment replacement this year and then have a plan to continue to increase it year over year.
No. They have a $458,000 problem.
So, would you like to cover the remainder with a one-time funding source?
I think we have to talk about it, but we can't-
I think we should.
Ignore what Shane said.
We can do that, we can-
He has needs.
We can bring that back with a budget amendment this year, and then they can carry it over to next year and use either sales tax surplus, ARPA grant money, or-
Let's don't, let's don't leave Chief Brody out of this because he needs money in his budget to increase the amount that is being already allocated for equipment replacement because of the cost of increasing equipment. So, let's, let's don't leave Chief Brody's department out of that discussion. And if PD has something as well, let's try to incorporate that.
We'll have to sit down and work through a lot of-
And remember, this is a one-time thing. We're not saying, as we said earlier, we put 400, and I'm just using that number.
Yes.
It doesn't mean it includes, if we have a $458,000 need, that doesn't mean that next year, that $458,000, do you guys have a question?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So, that doesn't mean that that $458,000 stays in the equipment purchase. It is, it, as we add, we can take.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, we are trying to get us up to speed in terms of where we need to be, but if, in fact, we get there, you don't leave that in the budget, you take it away from the budget and then get back to a more normal replenishment of those things. They had to make decisions along the way about not buying new equipment because of budget constraints and issues. But we, as a council, have to understand, it's not just about people, it's giving people what they need to do the job.
We can do that, and we'll make note when we bring back the budget next year that we'll talk about that additional amount in equipment replacement, whether we want to keep it there or not.
Yeah. Is it?
Okay.
Tina, what else do we have?
Just a reminder that we do still, given the direction I think that I have now, I think we still have about $5 million left in that AP, ARPA grant. And just a reminder that there is timelines associated with that. We have to obligate the funds by 12/31/2024, so we still have some time, but some of our infrastructure projects do take quite a bit of time, so I just wanted to-
What was that number on capital improvement?
548 million. Got it down to 543, mayor.
I got some in District One.
No, no, nobody's getting anything till I get my sidewalk, got it?
Yeah. We don't necessarily have to have direction today, but I just want to make sure that I continue to remind you all that we have that money available and that it does have a timeline, so. That's all I have. Mayor?
It's the first half, right?
Yeah, I know that we have people in the audience, I don't know if there's somebody who want to come up and say something.
Oh, absolutely, the microphone's open.
We can always count on Mason.
Made a comment earlier about the gentleman being too tall speaking down into the mic. I was really worried about having to stand up there, so I appreciate that. So, I prepared a speech, I wasn't really sure how today was going to go, what was going to be said, so I'm going to repeat some things that obviously that we've talked about. I apologize for that, but I think it's important, obviously, I've got some supporters here today. I think it's important that it's said, and not just for the organization that I represent or for, as one of many city employees, some that don't have the ability or the opportunity to come here today and stand up and talk. So, my name's Mason Matthews, a single member of District Six. I'm also the elected president of San Angelo Firefighters Association. I want to start by saying that I love being a citizen of San Angelo. I love being an employee of the city and I truly love serving the citizens of San Angelo. I've got these red shirts behind me, and I can assure you that they share my-
One's still sitting in the audience, I want to know why you're not.
He's got a back problem. He's broken.
Okay.
I can assure you that they all share my sentiments. As I mentioned, a lot of, a lot of city employees that do not have the ability or opportunity to come here today and stand up, but I can assure you that they come to work daily with the exact same attitude and do the exact same thing. I want to thank Mr. Kendrick in finance for the work that they put into the presentation today. And as we're well, we've got, as we're all aware, we've got many vacancies throughout the city, difficult, and it's been difficult to fill or even receive applications for these jobs. Employee compensation is at the root of these vacancies and the lack of applicants for them. I'm not familiar or as well-versed in all the departments and all of their issues, but I am familiar and well-versed with the issues that we face specifically in the fire department. But I can tell you, the two words that keep coming up today are no different in our department, and I do feel that these are uniform across the city, and that's retention and recruitment. You know, in regards to retention, mayor, you brought up several times that, you know, we got to worry about the people that we've already got here that have stuck with us. I completely agree. You know, the slide and some of the numbers that Brian presented earlier, that we're talking about forty percent of our workforce by the year 2025, just in our own department, we're talking about twenty percent by that same mark of 2025. You know, and I'm going to tell you, some of the discussions and decisions that we're talking about and that are possibly going to be made now and maybe the next few years may increase that number, depending on how this goes. And it's not just the eligible retirees that are an issue. We've lost fifteen personnel in the last five years, and that's money leaving every time. We talked about what's the cost of a vacancy. You know, we put, there's a price tag on training of just our personnel in our department, seventy to $90,000, and you're looking at fifteen of those in five years. That's substantial. So, there is a cost of a vacancy. You want to talk about a plan, we brought this up, and I'll elaborate on this more here in a second, but a plan's a commitment. I know that in previous meetings, there's been some, you know, talk about, well, you know, committing future councils, and I'm not sure about that. And I'm going to tell you, every decision that's made in this room is committing future councils, whether that's fees or pay or, you know, rules and whatever you want to call it. Even the decisions that you do not make, commit future councils. I'm going to tell you, we're, here and Brian painted a picture that we're on the verge of already having vacancies and possibly more by not doing something, you're also committing future councils. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit about recruitment. There's less people choosing the fire service and frankly, for being the first responder profession altogether. That's not a San Angelo problem, that's not a Texas problem, it's a national problem. This means that basically the pool of potential candidates or applicants, potential applicants is getting much, much smaller. I currently act as the main recruiter for SAFD. As I attend several job fairs and recruitment opportunities throughout the year, I get the chance to promote this department and the city and try to attract potential applicants. And I'll tell you something, we talked earlier about creating enthusiasm. I don't know, you know, we talked about Brian Groves and his department helping, we've got a talk show. I go on every piece of social media that I can possibly go on, and not just as a member of the San Angelo Fire Department, but also the president of the employee organization. I know that I am currently personally trying to do everything I can to create enthusiasm, as is everybody standing behind me and everybody in my department. So, I can assure you, that is absolutely happening. But usually, as I go out, and I've been, I've been acting as the recruiter for several years, but when I go out and I start trying to do these recruitings, really, people are, applicants fall into really two groups, right? Either they're from San Angelo or they're not, right? They're non-residents or they are. When I go out, you know, usually when applicants, I mean, when I talk to these people, they're not applying in one place, right? In order to basically increase their opportunities or their options, they apply at several different fire departments. This is not just, they don't just go for San Angelo. They put out five, basically five applications, they go apply at all those places, and they pick the best deal, really. And I really, when I go out, it usually basically comes down to four things. They're trying to check four boxes. What's the pay? How busy are you? What's your schedule look like? What's the cost of living there? Right? And I tell you, usually if you can check one of those boxes, just one, the likelihood of you being, getting an applicant gets better. I'm going to tell you, currently, we can't check those boxes. I used to be able to check, I used to be able to possibly check the box of cost of living, right? That used to be kind of our golden goose, right? We didn't really have the pay, we're a busy department, eight stations, 100,000 people, we're doing 20,000 calls a year, that's a busy department. Ooh, that's a lot, they hear that, you know, and then, okay, well, what's your schedule like? Well, our schedule's different, basically, than the, than the mate, the trend, I guess you could say, or the majority of the fire departments. It's a little different. Well, that kind of throws them off, you know, and the next thing, what's the cost of living? And obviously, we know where that is now. It's making recruiting that much harder. You know, in the past, our salaries have been measured against comparable or benchmarked cities and addressing, and then addressed using a set standard or goal to keep employee pay competitive. We no longer have anything like this firm in place, and it's been mentioned in previous meetings when discussing employee salaries that we live in San Angelo, we should be focused on us and what we do here in our town and not other cities. In our career field and with this dwindling pool of interested individuals, we do not have the luxury of relying solely on the local talent to replenish our staff. We have to recruit outside of San Angelo as well. The reality is, is we are in a competition with other cities' fire departments for these interested individuals, as we desperately need to become more competitive so we can check more of those boxes. Now, because it's been said that we need to focus on San Angelo, let's focus here. Let's focus just, just at home. In the past few years, as has been said today, there's many companies right here at home that have increased their starting pay significantly, and we're now less competitive right here at home. The fire and EMS career field requires a lot of time and training and an individual can, before an individual can go out and save lives and protect property. And the dangers in our profession are real and present, obviously, daily. There are several businesses here in San Angelo whose starting pay and benefit packages are better than what we currently offer and without the risk of these dangers. So, as I recruit locally, I go out, I'm talking to a potential candidate, I start getting, trying to generate some enthusiasm, and I explain, we have, you know, we have a six and nine-month hiring process and followed by an eighteen-month academy where you can possibly, you know, you're going to receive the equivalent of two degrees. And basically, you're also going to have the realness of possibly risking your own life to save another. And what I'm competing against is, you know, another store or fast food restaurant offering a one-month orientation and equal or better pay with no basically risk, potential risk to their life. Obviously, what I'm trying to get to is, we're not having great success at getting these people to submit an application. It was also mentioned that, well, you know, some of these places that have these fast food restaurants, I think McDonald's was mentioned, well, you know, $15 an hour, there's stipulations. We have those too. Our stipulations currently at the fire department, you sign a five-year contract, and fifteen people in five years have said, yeah, we're good. And they're gone. We are in competition with other cities, and we are in competition right here in San Angelo. Retention and recruitment throughout all city departments is directly related to pay, it just is. We urge you to consider this proposal and aggressively address salaries so that the city can keep the stellar employers here and attract new ones to come through the door. Again, I want to thank Mr. Kendrick and finance for the work that they've done. We would also like to say thank you to Mr. Valenzuela for listening and working so diligently with us for the past few years.